Council and the staff of Syracuse City, I'd like to welcome you to this public meeting, which will be held in a hybrid in-person or electronic format in accordance with House Bill 5002. Council and the staff of the Open and Public Meetings Act amendments signed into law on June 25th of 2020. In-person attendance will be allowed in the Syracuse City Council chambers at 1979 West, 1900 South. In consideration of the COVID-19 pandemic, social distancing and mask-wearing is encouraged, but not required. The meeting will be streamed live on Syracuse City YouTube channels and public participation will be allowed through Zoom. And those links can be found on our web, on our website if, if you're interested in joining. I'd like to call our meeting to order, and I've asked Corinne if she would offer an invocation or a thought for us this evening, and I've asked Lisa if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank thee that we can gather together as a city and perform the, the business in front of us. We pray that thou will be with us to have us think clearly and to have reason, reasonable and rational discussion and look at the true facts of each item. Father, we pray that thou will please bless our city and our state and the whole Western U.S. with rain. Please help us to, through this drought. We pray that there will be some alleviation, and please provide that which we cannot provide ourselves. We thank thee for our blessings, and we pray that we will do good to all around us, and thus we humbly ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Appreciate that. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adopt the adjournment. So moved? I have a motion by Dave, another second?
Second.
Second by Corinne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It should be noted that we've not yet been joined by Councilmember Savage. We expect that will happen. Item number two, public comment. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. We'd like, would ask you if you're here in person or are joining us in Zoom, by Zoom, that to limit your comments to three minutes. If you'd state your name and place of residence. In this hybrid version, we've also allowed for emails. Now, counsel, at five o'clock, we had not received one email, but it was sent about two o'clock this afternoon to a, someone involved with the camp on one of the issues here we're going to entertain tonight by Spencer from the family of, of the Bennetts, Spencer Bennett. It wasn't received by us here until 5:45, but it was sent to that group that represents them at 1:49. So I've asked Cassie if she would go ahead and read that one.
Okay, the email reads, "To whom it may concern, I am speaking on behalf of the Bennett family. We have heard there are some concerns with developing the property we are trying to sell, and as a family, we are in hopes that you will consider allowing our property to move forward and be developed. We feel there have been other properties with similar situations allowed to move forward, and we hope that we will be given the same opportunity. Otherwise, we are put in a situation where we will have to wait for future developments to happen before we are able to do anything with my parents' property. They are hoping to sell it now, not later. Thanks for your consideration. Spencer Barrett."
Thank you.
Excuse me, Bennett.
So counsel, that was the only email that we received that we felt qualified. Now, let me go to Zoom first. Is there anybody here attending in Zoom that would like to address the council? I can see a couple, one just connecting, and is there anyone there that would like to approach? If you'd just raise your hand. Cassie, I'm not seeing anybody, are you?
No.
Okay, let's go to hearing person. Those of you here within, within chambers, if any of you would like to come forward and address the council, we'd welcome you to come forward.
Is this where, like, I was on the agenda, do I wait for that?
If it's on the agenda, just.
Well, if it's a public hearing.
If it's a public hearing.
If it's not, is it a public? What, what's your issue?
The water, the water fine.
I would talk it now. No, we're, that's on the agenda. And we'll get to you. You're Mr. Affleck? Hey, we'll get to you. All right. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay. Hearing and seeing, then I'll close public comment. Now, Mr. Affleck, this would be your time if you'd like to come and stand at the pulpit and.
I'm just looking to not get fined. I guess everybody pays attention to these newsletters, which I do not. I don't think I've ever read one in my six, seven years living here. I set my water, and I've done so for six years at eight in the morning. It's not like I was trying to break any rules. I just try to not get fungus. That's why I do it in the morning. And apparently it changed. You can't go over 10 o'clock. Each station, I run about 20 minutes, so I guess it probably would have ended about 10:30. And he came by at like 10:25, and the last station, nine was probably on, if I did my math correctly. So I was like, oh geez, okay, well, no problem. I'll just go change it to seven and problem solved, and we won't have any more drama. And I don't know, I was like, that was like on a Saturday, and then like Tuesday, I got another one, and it was apparently because I'm not supposed to water on Tuesday and Sunday. Now, that one, I definitely could have seen if I looked at that sheet, because it says, if I'm not mistaken, north of Antelope, west of 2000, I think that's the area. But sadly, I just looked at what I did wrong and said, oh, I'll fix that, no problem. And that was that. Don't water. I water three times a week, just like everyone should. My lawn looks terrible, just like everyone else's. And it's not like I was trying to break any rules. I never break rules. I just mind my own business and try to do my thing, and my neighbors have flooded me for five years. I have a pool pump, and I took a bucket and drilled holes and put rocks in it, and I have to do it every spring, every time they water, for five years. Because I'm the low spot, and they literally flood my yard. My trees die, everything. I haven't, you know, I haven't made a fuss of it. I just deal with it. It's horrible. I called the city. They said, well, they signed something that they would retain their water, but they haven't. I have a million videos. I've asked them to do something about it. They, they never do. And, you know, it's just like, and then here I am, just after 10, because I don't re, I don't know. I mean, other than hearing from a neighbor, how would I know? So that's the frustration, is I've got it fixed, and now I don't have it set for Tuesday and Sunday, because it's every other. So obviously, it would have been like Tuesday, and then it would have been Thursday. So, I don't know. I, and I, I didn't try to do this. I'm not trying to break your rules. I just don't pay attention to the things that you put out there. I mean, I just work. I'm a single dad of four boys. I just don't have time. I just don't look at that stuff. My mail sits in my box thing for like three weeks sometimes. I literally pay that little attention. So, I mean, I pay my bills with checks still, because I'm just old school. Like, I just don't look online. I don't pay attention to this if there's a Facebook page. I just don't care. So anyway, that, I'm so frustrated with it that I actually came here tonight, which I normally would just be like, ah, whatever, and do it. But it, it drives me crazy, because I'm trying to follow all the rules. And because I didn't read the newsletter or talk to my neighbor, I, first one, I have no idea. I, I mean, literally, it's so easy to switch my thing and to change it to seven to eight that it's like, it's not like I was trying to be the bad guy. So anyway, I mean, I heard you weren't supposed to water during the day, and I was like, all right, that's fine. I don't do that. That's a problem. But apparently, after, just after tennis, you know, and, and in your world, that seems crazy that people wouldn't pay attention, because it's, you talk about it all the time. But in my world, it just doesn't, you know, I could start talking to you about real estate, housing, or investing, and you'd be, you know, and I'd be like, oh, well, this, and you'd be like, huh? Because I do it every day. But I have to think, not everyone is focused on these things, you know? So that's my frustration. So, anyway, they said this was the only way. He couldn't say, each person just kept saying, no, there's no lane, it's a no lane, see, and then this is the only avenue. So here I am.
Right. Thank you. Why don't you have a seat? Paul, can you re, would you like to offer a rebuttal?
I don't know that we need to. So, so the council is vested with the appeal authority here, so you have the authority to decide whether, whether to impose the fine or not. Really, the, the opponent's not saying that he didn't, you know, violate the, the order that the council put out. He's just saying, don't, you know, don't enforce it, at least this time. So that's, it's, it's up to you, counsel. You're, you're free to make that decision if you want to. Just be aware, there are, there are many people who have gotten the tickets and have paid the fines, and there'll be many more people who will probably be getting these tickets as the, as the season carries on.
Counsel, who would like to lead out here?
Well, I, I can.
Seth?
I can take a stab at it. Mr. Affleck, I, it's Affleck, right? Okay. Thanks for, you know, coming before the body and, and taking that opportunity to come and, and share your thoughts. I think, I think, I guess my one concern would be that, you know, there's still one other facet of the, of the rules that, you know, you're still maybe in violation of to this day, and that would just be that we're recommending or requiring citizens to not water more than twice a week. And it's really due in part to this extreme drought we're in, that we're in this together, you know? And, and I, I understand all the concerns you brought forth with your neighbor, and I'd, I don't know if that's familiar to our current staff of, of the concerns that they brought forth, but, you know, I think that would be something we can, we can work to remedy, because that sounds like there's a, an abuse that's going on there as well that we, we would want to look at. But I would probably not be inclined to, to offer the overturning the fine, just because, like, like we've been advised, there's just so many more that have already been in violation and unfortunately had to pay the, the require, the required fee. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Corinne, can I go that direction?
Sure. I, I definitely feel for you. So, so hard, because you know you're not trying to game the system. Problem is, a lot of times, like, for instance, if, if we violate a law that we're not aware of, we're still responsible for breaking that law. Like, for instance, if I'm speeding in an area, and I don't know the speed limit, I'm still responsible for that lack of knowledge. And so it's, it's really hard, but I, I have to say that, that as well, I, I am sorry that your, your good intentions for following the rules and being a good citizen were, were not enough in not knowing what the situation was.
Hey, thank you.
I, I do, we all commiserate with you. Nobody wants to pay a fine, and every time we, we actually have rental cars, and people will take them and get parking tickets, and we're responsible for them because a law was broken. And we can't track down the people that took the, the loaner cars, and, and it's just one of those, one of those things that happens in a, in society like ours. I don't think that it wasn't a matter of you not having an opportunity to, to know this, though that's what the warning was for. And I know that in reading what you had, what you had just said previously, you said that you didn't bother to read the warning, and, and that's, that's unfortunate, because that was your, your opportunity to know what the rules were, and to find out that it was two days a week, that it's the 10 to 6 that's closed off, and that these, there are certain days that we can't have you watering. And I also, I also think that it's a responsibility to not just recognize that it's a city issue, it's a state issue. And so even if you aren't reading, aren't on Facebook, or aren't socially connected, and, and aren't reading the newsletters, which a lot of people don't, there's news, and, and there's internet, and there, it's been widely covered, what's going on in the state and the drought conditions, and the governor himself has asked us to, to, to retrench on our watering. So I, if it were a warning issue, and, and you hadn't received it, or you hadn't had an opportunity to read through that, I would be more inclined to give you a pass, but you did receive the warning, and it's only fair.
Amen.
Well, I, I think everything's been said so far. I mean, what we followed is, comes from the governor's office. The only thing that I would add here is that what you're really asking us is to treat you different than everybody else in the city, and we can't do that. So.
Hey, counsel, we have a, an item before us. Do you want to act on it?
Motion to deny the appeal.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Seth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I heard four yays, and I believe Jordan is out of town, is what I'm guessing. Motion passes for not. We do have a quorum. Let's go on to item number four, recognition items. Brody, you had a GFOA certificate you wanted to present this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Steve, could you come join me at the microphone here? This document here I have in front of me is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR. And it has, it is the story of the city's finances for the, the previous year. This is the, the 2020 version. It's also been adopted by the American Insomnia Association, for those who struggle sleeping. There is, there is an exception, though. If you are an accountant, it actually acts as a stimulant, so. So, there's my accountant joke, sorry. But yeah, this, this is available online for anybody to see, for the residents to see, and it describes where our money went. Every year, I've been fortunate enough to be able to take this off the, the wall here in, in City Hall, in the hallway. This is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and what you'll see here on the edges, if everybody wants to. Are the, are the number of years that Syracuse City has been awarded this certificate. This certificate comes about through a rigorous analysis of the CAFR, and it is awarded to those who, who reach the highest levels of financial reporting that go above and beyond the, the, the basic general accepted accounting practices. And it is a, it is a testament to the transparency that the city has in its finances and its dedication to good governance. And Steve is the workhorse behind that, our, our budgeting and our finance, and we're proud of what he's accomplished here. This is the 11th year in a row that he's, he's put this together, and we're proud of him and what he's done for the city. And every year, I get to hand this over to him, and then we get to put it back on the wall. And, and we add a little another circle there for the 2021, once we get it, so. Thank you very much. Good job.
Counsel, anything to say to Steve? Any of you?
Well, just that he does this so regularly that it's become somewhat commonplace, but it really is a big achievement, and we want you to know that that's not forgotten on us.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks for making this look so good.
We have another group that makes us look really good.
Last year, remember that the COVID pandemic really created a fuss with our Syracuse pageant, and I ask the pageant committee and some of the young ladies who are our current royalty to join us tonight. Can you all come forward and let us give you a big hand of, a round of applause? And while they're doing that, Corinne, do you, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, first of all, for Shelley and her committee to have taken a, a pageant that was in shambles, that was pretty much boiled down to the contents of a cardboard box, that was handed to Shelley and said, good luck, to what they have today, and the, how it transforms these girls when they first try out, and, and the, the different classes that they have to take. I'm so impressed every year. It's so amazing, and you all do such a great job. Thank you. And it blesses our whole community, the businesses and everything that come out, camaraderie that we see that happens with that, and cheering for each of the girls is just wonderful. So I just want to say thank you and bless you. And actually, if Lisa is available, I had her attend this year, because I was at a funeral out of state at the time. So if she has any comments on this year's event.
You guys were awesome, and, and reflect beautifully, literally and figuratively on the city. I've been involved in pageants for years, and as a judge, many years, and, and I've watched the girls just aspire, and when you have a goal, and when you have something that you're working on, especially the service projects, they're amazing. When I see that happen, I, I think that's what aspiration looks like and attaining, and just the journey of it is, is what makes us really proud. And we're really lucky to have the people behind you, because that is no small feat. I've, just the decorations alone, as I watched them swaying in the breeze on the stage, I thought, that doesn't just happen, nothing in life just happens. So thank you so much for all you did for us.
Oh, and last comment, thanks, police, for being their escorts again this year. We sure appreciate you.
We love you.
And thank you for making them look better. That, that is something that's on my docket, is how, thank you for making them look better. Now, I was able to attend, I think, most of the functions of the pageant this year, and, and I had a chance to sit down with Chloe and Haley before they left, and I was really impressed. Last year was really a disaster for them and their court. There were, we didn't have any events, and, and you, and what you would normally think was people would just say, well, we didn't have any events, so we didn't do anything. That wasn't the case. These two young women organized things on their own, and there were events held that they so, placed on social media. They promoted our, our, our restaurants, which was a real concern to me at that time. So I'm very proud of that outgoing group, because in spite of the fact that they were dealt a lemon, they made lemonade out of it. Now, you girls, I've, I've already been involved with some things with you, and I was so proud of you at the senior luncheon that we had this year, and it was big. It was wonderful to see you there in service with them and performing some of your talents. We're so grateful for you to have been there. So Shelley, on behalf of the city, Shelley Thorne, Haley Hamlin, Ashley Cisneros, Erin Blankenship, Brittany Rice, Ken, Ken, is it Kennedy Thornley, Amber Killian, and Rochelle Johansson. Thank you, ladies, for everything you do to revive, of having revived this pageant and making something that the city is very proud of. We're grateful for you. So we stand up and applaud you. Thank you. Ellie, Ellie, would you like to say something representing the group?
Yes. First of all, this is definitely a group effort, and there's eight ladies on the committee, but we also involve the current queens in planning everything, and they really enjoy that aspect as well. But I really just want to stress the fact that we really promote community service. Our, our whole goal is to get these girls out of their comfort zone and out of their little box of me, 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 and to look outside themselves and reach out and serve the community and find a need and fulfill that need. And they do it every year. Hands down, they, they just impress me every year with the things that they are able to do, not just the current royalty, but all 17 contestants, which is another thing we're really excited about. When I took over this pageant, we had four contestants, and every year, it just grows and grows and grows. And, and that is evident to me that we're doing something right, and these girls come back again and again, because they believe in what we do. So I appreciate them so much, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity to serve our community.
Well, we still in the throes of COVID. If we weren't in COVID throes, perhaps when we get herd immunity, we'll be down off of this roster and come and hug you and shake your hands, but trying to be safe. We, we're not requiring any masks. In order to be safe, we're not going to come down, but thank you for all you do. Counsel, let's move on. Robert, let's do a report on the secondary water provisions, and Crest, I think you had something you wanted to add to that with him.
Counsel, I'm here to report what the water is looking like for our secondary water system. Eco reservoir as of July 1st is at 32% and full and depleting. I think as of today, it's probably closer to 30%. Irrigation companies have been, become even more worried and have been talking. I know Weber Basin is setting up an emergency meeting with irrigation companies throughout Weber and Davis County. Other irrigation companies are looking at ending earlier. Pine View and Hooper have been talking about, you know, I'm, I'm not announcing for them. I can just tell you what they've been talking about. So whether it's factual or not, you would have to go to the company, but they're, they're looking at August 15th for a close, a shutdown. And Davis Weber, who is our supplier, our biggest, one of our biggest suppliers, is looking at shutting down their pressurized system September 1st. That does not affect our supply of water, because we have rationed our water allotment. We got our total allotment, and we have rationed the flow for our inflow stream, so we will continue to get the water clear through the end of our season, September 20. Okay? And because we decided to end September 20, we ended up getting those, that, those last 10 or 11 days added. So that's what this graph is actually showing. And you can see from, on the July 13th date, how that amount of inflow is increased. That's why the bar is a little higher. It's not a huge increase, but it is an increase, and that will continue through September 7th. The reason why it goes down is because our contracted water with Weber Basin will go down, will finish on August 31st. Does that make sense? But we'll continue with that added flow through till September. It shows September 21st here, but that's just because of how the weeks show on this Excel spreadsheet. But that's pretty close to our 20th. So, so as far as Syracuse managing water, we're doing a very good job, and our neighboring cities will most likely shut off before Syracuse will. So that is good news. It still is low flow for us, so we still need to be vigilant to follow the, the executive order from the governor, no more than two days a week, and also what Syracuse has put out for no watering Sundays, and, and the one other day a, a week is a no watering day for the quadrant of the city. Just pick two out of the five days. So this next slide shows where we're at with our total allotment. So we are currently, we've used 43% of our water allotment, and that is as of today. So we are looking really good there. We are about halfway through our season. So with our shortened season, we had 20 weeks. We are 10 weeks now. So we're right half, halfway in, and we're 43%. So we're actually managing it very, very well. in. And we're 43%. So we're actually managing it very, very well. So there are charts that we follow. There are many charts that we follow to check the health of our secondary water system. One of them that I want to show you here is what our water tank levels are doing. This is a really good indicator of how the whole overall system is doing. Obviously, there's more charts that I look at than this one. But this is a really good one to show the whole overall picture. When our water tank is full, typically, and not always, in this year, our reservoirs, sometimes they're not always full, but our tank goes full. That's why I have to watch all charts. But this one's a good indicator I want to show you. So this starts June 1st to June, well, I guess it cut off a little bit, but it went to June 30. As you can see, the tank, you can see the high line right close to 90 feet. And, you know, zero is the low. So the tank throughout June pretty much emptied almost every single day and then refilled every single day. But in order to refill it, we had to use the supply from the reservoir. So that's June. Let me show you July. Here's our tank in July. From July 1st to July 7th, our tank didn't always empty every day, but we did have a struggle around July 4. And since July 7th, our tank has remained fairly full. We noticed a huge improvements this last Sunday. It's not perfect yet, but huge improvement. And it has helped our system to sustain water in the tank. If we can keep water in that tank, we don't have to use water out of our reservoirs to refill the tank. If we can keep that million gallon tank full, then it's easier on our reservoirs and let the reservoirs use the buffer up and down a little bit. Okay? And this week so far has been really, really good. Now, we've been working very closely with our farmers as well. When they don't need water, they share their turn with us. And for the first time, we've been able to share water Sunday with them, which has been phenomenal. So they gave up a turn Monday, just yesterday, to help fill our reservoir too. So we're working together very closely with farmers. Neil Briggs is one of our farmers who had some of the water. And he was amazed that he, and he's certain he will be able to get his third crop this year, which he was not confident that would happen. So we're happy about that because, you know, we're working together with farmers and it benefits our entire community too. So I do want to thank the citizens who are doing their part. It is showing that it's helping. But the only reason, well, not the only reason, I think a strong reason why it's helping is because of enforcement. We started enforcement June 1. And as you can see, you know, it took about three weeks before fines began. It was the third week in June when our first fines started happening. And now, you know, we're five weeks in from that June 1 to where we actually are seeing the difference. It's working. It's helping. And enforcement, we don't have a full team to go out to every single person every single day. It's literally impossible. But enforcement is happening day, and it is happening through the nighttime, even through some midnight hours. Okay? It's working. So that's a good thing. We have had some complainers, and you've seen one here tonight who is appealing. And I do want to put this on record because it wasn't mentioned. When Mr. Affleck came in to complain, he was verbally hostile to our administrative assistant. And before he left, he took the violation notice that was in his hand and flung it across the administrative assistant's desk and it hit her before he left. And that is unprofessional and not right. And I didn't appreciate that. But I just wanted that stated on record so people understand what we are dealing with. And I appreciate what you do. This is not just a Syracuse City problem. This is a Western United States problem. And one worry that I have is next year. It takes two average precipitation years with average snowfall to fill Echo Reservoir. And we're at 30% now. What is next year going to do? And it's nothing, it's Mother Nature, right? We have to, these weather patterns have been extremely unusual. I'm sorry I'm going long, but I think it's worth you knowing that. So what we can do this year, you know, is definitely important, but we also have to look out for next year.
Crest, you had some concerns over parks?
I did. And I mentioned this, I talked with Brody about it, and I also just talked with Robert about it. We have been following exactly what we're asked of the residents to follow. And if you went to any of our parks, they're really, really struggling. And so I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that in the letter, it stated that large properties, parks are treated, could be treated differently. We're fine to keep going as the way we're going, but I just want you guys to be aware that we are going to lose some parks. There are some areas that we're at dirt. And the issue that we have coming up is Chad has tried everything that he possibly can. And as you guys know, the pressures fall at different times of the night. From 12:00 AM to 3:00, it drops dramatically. And in a household, you still might be able to get some of those to pop up. On a park, you do not get those rotators up and actually watering. So we have sections of our park that are not getting water, even when we're changing that, because between those times, it's dropping so low. And we haven't, I haven't had the time to talk with Robert about, I know that sometimes we've had to drop the pumps off, but mostly it's because of usage if people are pulling it at that time. But we don't have the water window that we need to be able to shut it down, you know, not try to water at that time and then start it back up at 3:00 AM. Because we can't get through all of our stations. For those in their houses, it's a few stations. For us, we have 50 in one of our parks. So the issue is, is that we're not, obviously not being able to get enough water. But on top of that, we have programs that are going to be starting. And I think that that's what residents need to understand, is they don't have hundreds of people that are also on their lawns and on their turf. And if we start our programs and we are not able to adjust this, we're going to be an even bigger problem in our parks. And we're going to be spending a lot of money to have to re-sawd a lot of these parks. So what we're asking is, we're not asking to go crazy. We would never do that. We're in a drought. Is that there are things that we may have to go outside the water windows. So we wanted your guys' suggestions on what those parameters could be. When we start doing our programs, we're not able to even turn on the water till 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night. And as you guys know, in the fall, we pretty much use every single park because of all the programs that we have running. We have contacted the school to see if we could use their football field on Saturdays. Because if any of you were at Founder's Park, you would saw that our football field is in dire straits. It's rough. And if you have people on there for 10 hours on Saturday, it's really going to tear it up or if it rains. So we've reached out to them. And then we would, you know, do a different program where we could move the fields around so that we're not in one spot. So we're trying to think of all the different ways that we can to save the parks. But we're really, really struggling. And you guys have seen the parks. And I know that all the residents are struggling too. I'm not saying that they're not. We just wanted to make you guys aware that we follow the same things. And it's really, really starting to affect, well, it already has affected our parks. And if any of you guys want to drive around with us and go out and like walk in the middle and see, I'd be more than happy to take you so that you can see. We're just really kind of nervous about it.
Dave, do you want to lead up?
I do, because I'm very concerned about this. And I have been and visited our parks, and I've driven around to look at some of them because this is a real big concern of mine. And the concern that I hope our citizens understand is it's not just about the state of our park at this moment. The fact that turf takes two years to really establish. If we lose the turf, then we have no park for two years, not for one year. And so I'm going to bring this suggestion up, and it is not going to be popular, but I think that we have to at least recognize it. Should we consider suspending some of our programs this year so that we don't lose our park completely? And I'm not suggesting all of them, and I'm not suggesting any specific one. But I think that we have to consider just in general, it doesn't help us to lose the park this year so that we have no programs for two years. And that's all I'm bringing to the table as a discussion point. Because, and then the second point is, what can we do to avoid losing our parks? If this means we have to water in different windows, I think that we have to. If it means that we have to alter some other things, we have to consider that. Because replacing a park is completely different than replacing, you know, you've got maybe a fifth of an acre at your house, or even a half acre at our biggest lots. It's different than trying to replace 30 acres. And trying to keep people off of it while it establishes as a turf is so difficult. We've seen that with other parks that we've tried to establish. And we're behind on parks already. So my biggest fear is that we go from where we are today maybe to I now have to step back and replace the parks that we lost in a drought. And I can't even think about the parks we want to build that the need is there for. So I'm just bringing this to the table that those are my concerns. And I'm willing to talk about anything that gives us long-term success, even if it costs us a little bit short-term.
Yeah, and we've talked about that too. And we're willing to do whatever we need to do to help save the parks. We're trying to centralize some of the programs, like more like right now, like all of our soccer, as much as possible, we played at Founder's only because we can move stuff around. And then also, those are the ones we're going to focus on trying to do a little bit more water outside of the window. So that we can, the ones that are really going to have that extra stress on them. And the ones that are not, then, you know, the ones, the parks that are not, we have, like Rock Creek, it's already really, really stressed. So we're going to move some football teams down there that are tackled that we can move around very easily. And it's not going to be a large amount of people on there. It'll be, you know, 20 per team for whatnot. So we have a lot of different ideas. We just want the opportunity for the council, because I know that you guys are going to get pushback. Today, we had to, Chad's been putting watering agent down and fertilizer and seeding and doing everything he possibly can to keep this. And today, we had to put some down at Founder's, and we just had to water it in for a little bit at 3:00. And you can't imagine the calls that we got coming in because we were doing that. And so that's my concern is that the city and all of you are going to get the reception that we don't care. And we absolutely do care. We just have to do something different. Because if something's not working, you got to make a change. And it's not working for our parks. So we've got to do something different. And Chad and I are willing to sit down with Robert, obviously, and come up with some ideas of what we can do with the very least, you know, amount of change that will hurt the drought. But with this, no rain, and the temperature's 100 degrees, and now with putting a bunch of kids on there, it's going to really.
I think that would be the best thing is to coordinate with Robert on solutions first because, I mean, we don't, we want to start there first. Whatever solutions that we can try. And then if we get to the point where things are just getting torn up, okay, we'll go to the extreme that way. But let's look at some possible time solutions. I'm for that.
I agree.
And mostly even just for education, if we need to just explain.
It seems to me like as we take this step towards that direction, which is very important in my eyes, it's really going to be important about the messaging. I mean, I would hope that we can be unified in whatever messaging we get out to our citizens. Because, yeah, we definitely get a lot of those, you guys are hypocrites, and why are you guys watering when we're not allowed to and such. But if that messaging looks something like, well, we've targeted areas of the parks that are going to be zero scape or that have future plans to let them just phase out, you know, and if we can turn off zones or anything like that in nonusable or less transitional locations and less programmable spots, you know, I think we can, we can be smart about it the best we can. I just, yeah, that's really difficult, but.
I don't want to lose facilities.
Quick question. I drove through my neighborhood just the other day, and a church, well, my church, was watering the side of the building. That's why I noticed because it was really loud. At noon, what do I do? Because it's, nobody's there. Who do I call?
Call Public Works. Call our admin. Just the Public Works general number. She'll take that down. And we can flag that. We have already been in discussions with the church. And yes, they have received a fine. So they understand. All right?
Thank you.
Lisa, do you have something?
I agree with the suggestion to have Cresta and Robert meet together as, whoops, sorry, as the two professionals who are constantly dealing with this before we even consider what we might suggest. Because I think you know what the first steps will be. So I'd like to hear your suggestions. And I do think messaging is going to be crucial.
Mayor, I suggest having this put on the work session agenda as a properly noticed. We're going to discuss things, including programming, sort of the whole gamut. So just we make sure that we're clear on the public on what we're going to be talking about.
Paul, would you listen to what I'm about to say and tell me whether this is also a good thing? Brody, I'd like to consider this as an administration. This is within the, this is the management of our public parks and our public water system. What I would like to do is have Cresta and Robert meet together with whatever members of the administration you'd like to meet with them. And in that work session, prepare a packet that we can then discuss. Because we can't sit and wait for discussion on the 27th. We've got to act.
I'm concerned that that's even going to be too long. I mean, this is the hottest month. It's the longest term of the hottest day. I'm worried that if we don't do some kind of emergency.
Brody, can you make any suggestion to us as what we might do to expedite this so that we?
Yeah, I mean, the reason it's brought forth tonight anyway is because I think some of the options available that are actually, can help the grass is if we water outside of the restricted times. And we're bringing it to you because we know that you're going to get the emails and the phone calls as well as us. But.
We're tough. We can take it.
But if, but what we want to make sure is if we have to water, you know, to get through the cycle in Founder's, if that has to continue on a Wednesday, is that going to be okay?
And that's already with the plan, right?
Or if it's 3:00, 4:00, is that going to be okay? Are we, are we not there? Do we want to hold fast? Because it is difficult to explain it. That's the problem.
Well, but the expense to taxpayers to have to replace these parks is so high. And it's not simple because it's a different, when you've got people trying to use it all day, every day, it's different than a lawn that you can keep people off while you're sowing your lawn. So I'm concerned that we need to take some emergency action before we just go the next two weeks, which will be probably the hottest two weeks of the year, and, you know, just let it all die.
Mayor, where you were suggesting this would be an admin decision so they can discuss and then proceed as needed with our blessing, if we have to have thick skin.
Well, in the letter, it already states that we are going to do things differently. But we know that you guys are going to get hit hard, as well as the city's going to get hard. So that's why I think Brody's saying, if you want us to just keep going how we're going, we can. But.
Yeah, it's already allowed. The city can operate a park differently than a residential lawn. It's the perception that is.
Sure. I mean, I would, I would say go forward with the measures that are within ordinance to ensure that the grass is sustainable and move forward. But then at the same time, still take that opportunity to look at any other measures we need to take if that doesn't, you know, remedy this or at least sustain it a little bit longer.
And really, if we, you know, sit down and look, then maybe we have to, then the 27th, look at programming, you know.
Could we have our, I can't remember the title now, the gal, our museum gal, but not museum.
Curator, communication specialist.
Thank you. Could she communicate to the public some way on this? I would really appreciate that.
I think we're all going to have to.
Oh, well, well, except for the fact that we can't all on Facebook because then it becomes a discussion. So there's a problem with that. If all five of us get on there and discuss, that's a problem.
We just can't discuss it or be on the same post, but we can all make separate comments.
Yep.
We'll post separately on our own social media accounts. But there does need to be a unified. We'll post separately on our own social media accounts, but there does need to be a unified presentation of what we're doing.
Yes.
I, so I want to be very clear that I'm not trying to be the, the mean guy who wants to cancel everything. I wish that we could have as much as possible, but I, I am suggesting that if we have to consider sacrificing things one year so that we don't lose several years and, and several even millions of dollars in sod. I mean, I think it's more understanding to say the drought has prevented us from having playable space than to say in a non-drought year, well, because of the damages, we're not going to have a program for several years. So I, I'm not saying that we're to that point. I don't make, I don't think I can make that call. You know, based on you have so much more information, but, but my thinking is if we have to sacrifice something now so that we don't lose everything in the future. We've done that with parks before where we've said this park is off limits for a year so that it can be playable for the next several, you know.
Brody, I'm going to, I'm going to step forward here and what I'm hearing from the council is they're thick, they have tough, not thick. They have tough skin as Jordan mentioned, and we'll deal with the heat from residents calling us. If you, Cresta and Robert would get together with other staff members that need to be there and let's talk about programming on the 27th. Okay. So go ahead and water as you need to and we'll take the heat.
I mean, if possible, try and keep it around the, you know, just after the times that people would normally be watering. So like, you know, the morning or the late evening. When it's on at noon, there's no question that there, there's more outside the area. But if you keep it close to the edges, I think you'll get fewer complaints if you can.
Yeah, we're going to do everything that we can. We just want everyone to know that like when we're in a wet, a water window, if we can't water on Friday and that's the only pressure we're getting in that area, we may have to water on Friday. In the, in the timeframe that we actually are supposed to, but you know.
One of the things that might be good to communicate to the people is that what they are doing very well at managing water and use.
I was just thinking that same thing.
Were you? And let them know that what they're doing as well and some, and we're managing ours as best as we can too.
We're definitely seeing improvement. It's not perfect and we can do more, but we're definitely seeing some progress and improvement. And, and thank you to those who are appreciated. It's been terrific.
It's a really positive that what you showed us for July is a, is a big improvement. And it also points out that our decision to start later was good. Because these other cities, if they get cut off early during the really hot month of August, I think they're not, it can be less forgiving than the fact that we started late when it wasn't the worst of times. So that was, you know, something worked out right there, I think.
It's water management.
And good job. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you for your input. We appreciate that. Thank you. Let's go on. We have four sets of minutes that we need to approve this evening. The minutes of May 25th, 2021, it was a work session of June 8th, 2021, a business meeting. On June 8th, 2021, a special RDA meeting. On June 8th, 2021, a special MBA meeting. Did any of you see anything that needed correcting in those minutes?
No, and I would make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion and a second from one, the first motion from Corinne and the second from, from Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
I hear unanimity there. So Cassie, would you record that as five? We have a consent agenda before us. Proposed ordinance R 2133 authorizing the sale of communications easement and access easement for the cell tower at 2400 West and 2900 West South. And the proposed resolution R 2132 adapting the North Davis Active Transportation Plan as a guide document in community and transportation planning. We've discussed this several times, counsel. I'd entertain a motion to, to ratify this action. Samud, have a motion by Seth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, Cassie, would you record that as unanimous? This item eight is mine, Resolution R 2134 appointing Lon Hunter as a full member of the Syracuse City Planning Commission. Lon has been serving as the alternate and with, with Brett Craig and leaving the planning commission, there was now room for this seventh member. So counsel, I, I, I would propose that we move Lon into that regular position on the planning commission. I have a motion from Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. Okay, item number nine, Robert, administration to award contract for janitorial services.
Push to talk. So we have put out an RFP for a request or proposal for janitorial services for our city buildings. Our current contractor has been working for the city for, I think, six years, if I recall. Their contract was not expired, but they had asked for a rate increase and we felt that it, it was a high enough rate increase. It was worth going back out and sending this back out to see what is the market doing? We only received two proposals, bids in. We did have four plan holders for, I think one was just a online bid room and the other one for some reason just didn't bid. It was advertised too in the newspaper. So it wasn't lack for getting information out.
In the interest of time, can I just say the gap was so big, I don't know that we need to talk about it that much.
Was it really double? It was like?
More than. It was.
It was a huge gap. I don't understand why, but.
Let's just approve the one that makes sense.
Great.
Did, did the original, the people that we had?
They are the low bid.
Okay, so can I just make a motion that we approve the low bidder because the high bidder was ridiculously high?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cassie, that was unanimous. Okay, Steve, let's talk about the American Rescue Plan.
Okay, we've, we've heard a lot about this. I've sent some information to you over email. We decided that it'd be best to take to the council, just so we're all on the same page to vote on whether we want to receive this money from the federal government. American Rescue Plan Act that was passed in March, you also hear it called the ARPA for the acronym. In the packet, it, it shows that we're scheduled to receive $3.7 million roughly. And there's a, a link to guidance. They're still working on guidance and what we can spend the money on. I think June 24th, they came out with some more guidance, but they're still not finalized. So our plan is if the council decides to accept this money, to come back at a later date and discuss priorities of how we want to spend the money. The grant can be spent till December of 2024. We do have until the 21st of July to respond whether we want to receive the money or not. If we do decide to get the money, it will come in two different tranches of what they call it. The first half will be immediately and the second half will be a year from now. And that's basically it.
Counsel, this is very similar to the CARES Act with the exception that well, here, here's my concern about it. We're encumbering our children for money that we're spending now. And yet if we don't spend it now and we don't choose to spend it, it will be spent somewhere else in the nation. So regardless of what happens, our children are going to be paying for something. They might as well be paying for a water, another water tank. Now, that is one of the uses that is currently, we know that's approved. So before, I've discussed this with both Steve and Brody for quite some time. I'm okay with it. But I wanted to make sure you were okay with it.
I think that we have, oh, sorry, am I, who's, who's, oh, Dave's supposed to speak. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just, I, I believe exactly as you said, Mayor, it, it encumbers our children, but, but it will, they'll be encumbered either way. And I've been concerned in the past that we haven't had much leeway about how we spent it. And there have been some, you know, if we were to weigh what we needed against what they allowed, it was a big discrepancy. So to hear that we could, we could use it for a water tower and things like that. I think those are things that will at least bless for future generations rather than just burden them.
I totally see it the same way.
Okay.
With the fact that it will be spent one way or the other. And if we can alleviate maybe other bills that we see coming down the pipeline, then this is a good way to offset that.
Seth?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's appropriate to move forward.
David?
I wish that it wasn't going to be, we pay for it no matter what because, but I think we all agree on that. The concern that I have is I, I'm, it seems like the way that it's structured, we can only spend it on money going forward. Which I do understand the relevance there, but like our city, we just encumbered a new debt. If this were allowed to be, help us relieve that debt, then I could see a real benefit to something like this. Whereas, and not that we don't have things we need to spend for, we do. But I just kind of wish that it was applicable that way, but it doesn't seem like that's an option.
They are, they call it the interim guidance. I can't remember the exact terminology, but they are still actually taking feedback till this Friday. We could possibly put in. It's not finalized. There's been several people that have raised that concern about can't, why can't we use it on debt? That paid for infrastructure.
Yeah.
As of right now, it looks like that's, that's not going to be allowed, but I'm not saying it, it possibly could change.
What are our avenues to put it, to weigh in there? And I would be very comfortable, I don't know if the rest of the council feels this way. But, you know, this, this pandemic that we've all endured added expenses other places that weren't covered as well. And if it could help us relieve that debt so that we're on a more firm foot going forward. I think that, I mean, anytime we don't have to pay interest on something, you know, I mean, we, at the sewer board, we just restructured some debt so that we eliminated years of interest. If we were able to do that with like our water tower, eliminate years of interest, it gives us more freedom going forward. And I would be in favor of that, but I don't see a reason to, to not try to use it within our community.
So can I jump in?
Please.
So one of the items I saw that was also on there as I was bringing to the website was sewer and wastewater. Are there any improvements we can make there? I know that those funds are a little tight right now. Could we allocate some of those funds to mitigate some upcoming items there that then those funds could be, I can't remember the color of the money, but again, allocated to some of these other items. I'd like to try and, like you guys are saying, unencumber the citizens as much as possible with this, their taxpayer money so that it benefits some of these other projects we're trying to get done for using taxpayer money as well.
That's a really good point. If we could, is there any freedom to? Future increases to cover infrastructure?
Yes, my understanding is we can use it for both culinary and sewer capital projects. I'm going to look into more guidance just to make sure we're, they're allowable projects, but I believe we can do that. And that would help with our, our fund balance problems that we're having in the sewer fund.
Then I would be very much in favor of that because it.
Me too, because that, that, that averts a fee increase or a tax increase in the future and helps us be more able to serve the citizens, especially when they're all at home, using those same sewers and everything like that. I would love for people to work home from home as much as possible. If we can improve the city infrastructure to help them with that and provide services, then that sounds like a win.
So I think this was about whether or not we accept it and then we'll discuss what we want to do with it later.
Yes.
Yep.
The resolution for this, I get it's.
Yeah.
So I'll make a resolution that we approve Resolution R 2131.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I think that was everybody. Cassie, would you record it as such? Let us move on to number 11. Garrett, do you want to bring us up to date with staffing in the police department?
Mayor, counsel, thanks for the opportunity tonight. I'm sensitive to the fact that this is not normally the meeting that we would be having this sort of conversation and decision. But I do have some tight deadlines that I don't have any control over. So I needed to get this proposal before you so that I can at least get your feedback on what you would like to do going forward. So the base, the basic situation we're dealing with is that we have a lieutenant retiring. And the proposal that I gave to you was, was my proposal for how we go about replacing him in a manner that I think still serves the department very well. But it also meets a lot of the vision statements that you have for the department. We went through it. I think it hit all of them, but number three, which has to do with, you know, being community oriented sort of thing. And I don't think it really plays into that one. So looking across the board, I think we've done, we've, we've presented a good proposal for the department, but it also fits the vision that the council has given for the department.
I'm just going to say I have only one concern and, and that is this looks like a solid plan. But how many years does this solve problems for us? Because I would be concerned if you were to come back next year and say, now I have a new plan that we've spent the money. I want to replace the lieutenant. So I don't want to do something that I'm going to have to undo in a year.
There won't be any concern of that within a year in particular. I mean, realistically, what we would be looking at is there's going to have to be expansion in that support services side of the house in order for that to need to come back. So things you could look at on it would be, you know, population growth or crime type that warrants another detective, expansion of the schools to where, you know, we need another SRO, something along those lines that could make that more difficult to have within the AC span of control.
So structurally, what I hear you saying is that we make this move. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't have to hire more police. It just means that I don't have to undo this structure for several years to come.
Yeah, if you're asking about rehire or putting that lieutenant position back in the mix, that is true.
Okay. Then I would.
I also appreciate the fact that this gets us one step closer to our traffic unit we've been trying to get. So I thought it was a good plan.
Yeah, I mean, you, you've brought this up now, my two years on council and I, and I've attended in the past with the discussions of the traffic unit. And this is not news to us. And I think it prepares us ahead of time, which is kind of what we're trying to do, right? Hit the ground running and make sure that we're not having things, not having to constantly react to things, but being able to be actively, you know, addressing issues before they become major concerns. And we know that the traffic unit will be a necessity coming up. I also like the, the fact that it creates more mobility within the, the agency, which creates more morale, which we already know with what's going on with agencies and heightened salaries across the state, that that probably creates some, you know, tension and, and desire to look for greener pastures more, you know, and I, I hate to think that that would jeopardize our ability to, to, you know, staff a really strong agency. And so I think this is a step in the right direction.
Chief, just want to say thank you for coming up with this because our attempts at trying to get the traffic unit weren't happening. So thank you for helping us help you. I appreciate it.
Lisa?
All, all of the above. Thank you. And I love, I love the problem solving here. It's like Tetris, isn't it? Trying to figure out what can take each, each hole and fill it with the best possible people and, and occupations. And, and having read the manager's report where we saw what an impact our police officers are having in the schools and just in, in general, we know what a, what a tremendous asset and blessing you all are to our city. I, I just appreciate you working to try and keep within budget as well and fill the spots the right way.
I have a question for our team over there on the bench. Action or discussion and/or action. I see no action item here. Do we need to do this by resolution or?
Well, there isn't one, so we couldn't name it.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, so, so they're not adding anything to the staff, to the wage scales. to the wage scales or anything like that. These are already positions that exist. So we're not, we're not doing anything like that.
Does it adjust our upcoming budget?
Yeah. I was going to ask, there is a budgetary process component to this. And just so we're all on the same page, I was going to ask Steve to make sure that you understand how you would run the money on this.
So it's always nice when you approve a budget and 13 days later you're, it's so early in the budget year that at this point, $65,000 is a lot of money, but in a $3 million budget for police, it may wash over a year's time. So my recommendation is to watch and mid-year come back and assess where we're at. There's going to be time to hire, you know, you're going to hire people at different wages than what we actually predict we're going to. So there's a lot of variables that go into it. But at this point, I would say wait and watch, but eventually we're going to have to do some type of a budget opening to take, take care of that $64,000.
So the, the recommendation then is cut where you can. I can think of a lot of funny things to say about that, but I don't dare because I don't want to say publicly that you should cut anything other than what naturally works out.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think one of the important pieces of this is that we, we really don't need money from the council right now to make this happen. Yeah, we're going to be paying, you know, a couple extra, extra salaries for a month. But that's all going to even out over the end. As far as the equipment piece of this, it's a very small amount in the first place. But, you know, in reality, I put it in there just so you know that we were trying to capture everything that might be involved. And it will really be, as Steve said, something that would probably be addressed in a budget opening, you know, after the first of the year, even if it is, even if we need it at that point.
Jordan, I haven't heard from you.
I talked for a while. Maybe you guys didn't hear me.
Did he?
Yeah. I said this gets us one step closer to the traffic unit.
I can't, I can't see your picture in Zoom, so I, I assumed you hadn't reached. So thank you.
Mayor, there's one piece I would like the council to know though, just so that we're all on the same page. Assuming our history holds true, which is that we get officers who are on the bottom end of this scale and we need to put them through the academy, you won't see two people in that traffic unit until probably April. And so then if we, if the, if the ability is there to put the last piece in place in July, we would be fully staffed up in that, in that unit in January of 23.
Yeah. And that's one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about is just that we've had such a struggle getting people in those classes. I hope we can find the candidates we need.
Yes, Steve, we, I mean, we've already posted, we have our testing process on Thursday with interviews done on Friday. You know, we're going to move as fast as we possibly can on this to, to get in. Like I said, we've got a hard deadline for the academy. So motivation to move.
While we have you here, could I just throw out this little tidbit? If you can think of something that some, youth understanding your job a little better and the value that we place on you. I would be in favor of that. I know that's not the core of this, but, but when we talk about how we struggle to get people in the academy, I look at the firefighter who've used some apprentice people in the Wildlands program. And maybe if there was, I don't know that that works in police force, but if there was anything that, some kind of ride along or some kind of mentorship within the school or something, I would be supportive of that because I think we need people to see how much we appreciate our law enforcement here as opposed to what they may see in some place that's a little different.
Lisa, you're already involved with that, aren't you?
We've struggled with that because of COVID this last year, but definitely.
Councilor, we do usually take at least two interns from the high school every year that are interested in criminal justice. But we would certainly, we can put, we can put our heads together and see if we can come up for something, something with you for the deep dive. Well, I believe we'll present that to you this fall.
Austin, you participated in that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to add into that is I was having some conversations with some police officers in other precincts. And this is kind of a kudos to our chief. They said that there are a lot of police officers from other areas that just look at our department and are so impressed that they would like to move to Syracuse. But there just are never openings because no one leaves. And so again, kudos to the chief for running a such a great department that we have. It sounds like based on my conversation that we have a lot of officers that would love to join Syracuse's police force. So again, kudos to you, chief.
And I would actually, the fact that whenever I've come in contact with police force, ours has been the shining example. And, and thank you. I mean, it's from the top down, you've, you've really got a great team.
Well, Garrett, it looks like you have a, go ahead.
Thank you, council.
Noah, we got a string of things, don't we?
This is item 12, authorize administration to execute memorandum of understanding to allow the Bird scooters to operate their scooter business in Syracuse City on a trial basis.
Good evening, council. You're right. We do have quite a lot of things to talk about tonight. Yeah. The, the number, item number 12, the Bird scooters, last time we talked about it in our work session. We debated some things, but ultimately decided let's look at a memorandum of understanding that's in your packet. It details the conditions of how they would operate. I believe I see Mike Butler. He's the representative from Bird. He's on the Zoom. Hopefully you've had a chance to read over the memorandum. It would authorize a temporary kind of operating permit basically, and we can see how it goes. And there'd be future opportunity to make adjustments if there, we ran into problems.
Seth, you want to lead us out on this one?
Yeah. So last time we spoke, I, I just kind of said that I think this would be a good litmus test to see if this was something that makes sense in this market. The one item on the MOU I was, I, I thought last time they talked about maybe an up to 100 scooters in the city. And I think the MOU says at a minimum of 50. Is that?
It says it right here on five, minimum 50.
Yeah. So does that mean we have a potential for, I, I guess, yeah, driven by the market, but, but it just seemed a little bit, because I, I was kind of thinking like, yeah, well, I was just thinking when they said up to 100, you know, that, that made some sense. That even seemed a little high. But starting at 50, I guess, you know.
Well, with the minimum, it doesn't say maximum.
That's what I mean. Yeah. We, who knows?
Yet I think that they wouldn't want to have their investment out there if it wasn't working.
Yeah.
So on that note, I, I mean, I agree with you.
It shows that it's working.
If they put more out there, it means that it's getting used. If they, if they're not being used, they're going to take them and put them somewhere.
Sure.
So I think they'd go away naturally if it wasn't, if there was excess.
Mike, did I, Mike, were you trying to get in here?
I, I was. I was just going to quickly, I, I would say reinforce that idea that we would likely start with somewhere between 50 and 75 and then add in 25 unit increments really until demand levels off. And it, it of course is not behooves us in any way to continue to add vehicles if they're not being ridden. But if they're doing very well and we see demand is pretty high, you know, I, I, I see towns that are much smaller than Syracuse that have 100 vehicles. So I, I likely wouldn't want to see a cap like that as we kind of naturally see the market monitor itself.
Okay. That, that helps. I, yeah, that, that makes some sense. I wondered also, we talked about maybe looking at some other areas of ordinance outside the city that have already kind of done this. But did we end up kind of going in the direction or was the opinion of the council to maybe wait to craft policy if, after this kind of plays out? I'm just trying to remember where we left this off. Is that kind of your recollection?
I think that, yeah, the MOU kind of describes that we reserve the right at any time during this trial to add in rules as we see fit. So I thought that was good that he captured that, but I think we can get them, let them get started. And then if we have problems, we'll build code up around the, any issues we see.
I think we should also adopt or at least take a, take the wheel from some other city who already has it instead of creating our own entirely and then craft it according to what we need.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with it.
But, but if for some reason this goes nowhere, I don't want to put tons and tons of hours into an ordinance that we don't need yet.
I think that's what we were talking about last time about seeing how, how this begins and then, and then,
Yeah, I was just trying to remember where.
When problems start, I know I, it, it takes a minute to recall all of it. But I think then eventually we come down to, let's take the wheel from another city who's already done a lot of this. And, and we had discussed also, there are probably going to be things that are unique to our city and we want to kind of leave it open to change.
Is, I guess this is a question for Mike. Is that pretty standard hours, four to 12, 4:00 AM to 12 midnight?
Yeah. Yeah. That's probably what we see in the vast majority of our markets.
If possible, I would like to include the police somehow in this discussion as well, since there's a possibility of enforcement and regulation of this.
Well, the MOU covers that as well. MOU, I thought they had a lot of good detail in there saying that we, we reserve the right to enforce any issues we have.
Sure. I just want to make sure that, that we have that communication right up front.
I think it's there.
Yeah. I didn't receive a motion, council on the MOU. I'm, I move that we authorize administration to execute the MOU with Bird scooters.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Seth, did I hear you?
Uh, aye, yeah.
How about Jordan? Did we lose Jordan?
He might just be unavailable. He said he was going to have to mute if he was in a situation where he couldn't talk.
All right.
Sorry. Aye.
Okay. We're all there then. Cassie, let's show that as, as unanimous. Item 13, Noah, proposed ordinance 202117.
Okay. We have seen this one before as well. This is the project called Park West. I think they're actually going to add RCs, Park West. Applicant is Zion Homes. This is a big step in their approvals. This is a rezone preliminary plat and development agreement. All of the information's in the packet. Nothing has changed since the last discussion, just for the benefit of those who may not have been following. This is the old RC Willie site. They're proposing a combination of single family homes and townhomes with variety of open spaces. There is something that I did want to bring up. There's just more of a housekeeping item. If you look at this map, this is the existing zoning on the left. And then the proposed zoning on the right, they're, within their project boundaries, they're excluding kind of this rear yard area that would remain commercial. It was, it was zoned commercial, of course, because of RC Willies. And I'm not sure of the entire history of why this guy's backyard was zoned commercial. But it may be a good idea for us to extend those boundaries of the A1 back. Not the, the PRD, we don't have the details to be able to put the PRD on there yet because we require all of the plans and things like that. Or, or we can just leave it. It just would be a weird little commercial donut hole just floating out there. And I, I don't want to derail the, you know, the progress on this project. But that is something to, to think about of our management of our zoning map.
Would the owner need to apply for that change or can we, because I don't know that we can randomly just bring that up and change it.
We are in control of zoning, this city police power. Usually an applicant applies, but it's, it's good policy to make sure they know what it is. But in this case where the home is already zoned A1 in the backyard is, is different. I, I would think it's up to us, but I see Paul anxiously, ready to give us knowledge.
Perhaps the question isn't whether we have the power to change the zoning. The question would be, is, has this particular parcel been subject to the notice and hearings and all the other things that would be required for us to do that?
Thank you.
So along those lines, are, are they paying higher taxes just because they're zoned commercial at this point? And has that been going on for years? Maybe they would really appreciate being rezoned.
That's another popular misconception about property taxes. I've actually called the county assessor's office before about this of how, how zoning really, you know, I don't, I don't want to get us on a big tangent here about how property is assessed. They, they really look at the potential for the property regardless of zoning a lot of times. And so I can't really answer, I haven't looked up their property taxes and compared it to other ones, but I would suspect that, that, the, because their commercial zoning hasn't changed their, their property taxes. But to Paul's point, in my, what I was asking wasn't to just sneak in, hey, let's just change this to the last minute. I was just, my, my suggestion would be, let's initiate a city initiated rezone on that to clean up our zoning map is what I would recommend, not sneak in something that hasn't been properly noticed.
But not tonight.
And just not tonight.
Independent of,
Sorry if I wasn't clear about that.
Later.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Well, council, we have a proposed ordinance change and a preliminary plat application from RC Park West. Do you think we need any more discussion?
So I, I had one question and this was maybe for Cresta. Just in the development agreement, the in lieu of fee was dedicated towards Jensen Park. And just with some of the discussion we've had tonight, I was kind of thinking, you know, is there any reason to, to think we don't reserve those funds as an option for Linda Vista and, or is Jensen just have 190 K worth of support that we need to do pretty quickly? So maybe that's a Brody question too.
Can I jump in on that? I think part of it is we're expecting that once the freeway is complete, we'll be getting some land around Jensen and this would give us the ability to help develop that.
That, that is one of the options, definitely. And as far as projects to be done, there's, there's more on Jensen than Linda Vista.
Plan to make sure we weren't paying ourselves to something. And I like that the active transportation plans, refuge island thing is on there too, and the development.
I also really appreciate the fact they are putting in, I believe this is the one that they're putting in a illuminated crosswalk across bluff to get to this park. And so this park will directly serve as its neighborhood via that crosswalk.
That was the thought because of the direct connection with the trail and its proximity to Jensen. But city council can decide wherever you want to use it and any of the, it just has to be within a half mile.
No, I just think whatever makes administrative sense. I was just,
Yeah. Trailside park is also within that.
Distance.
Yeah.
Couple of details I noticed in the packet on like page 348. They're missing some front doors. I, it's on the other floor plans, but it's not in the mockup. Just FYI, it's hard to go through brick.
And did we get the porches figured out?
That's what I was going to say. I think the one thing that we needed to really nail down for, for all developers, basically, is this front porch idea. And along those lines, I was driving down Gentile or up Gentile. And there's a really beautiful condominium or townhome kind of area that does not have big front porches. And because of their size of them and the building materials, they're really quite beautiful.
Okay. Sorry, really quick, different page from your packet to my packet. So sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Fine.
My apologies.
So I, I just think that we need to figure out what our, what our point is for having the requirements on the porches and if we can have a superior product, even if we're shrinking that size. And my, I think that we really need to nail it down for, for these proposals because we, we have a discrepancy and, and they're trying their best to, to do what we're asking. But I, I tend to think that for townhomes, we don't need to ask the same thing that we're asking for single family homes. So, but we, we do need to, to figure that out.
Okay. It looks like, go scroll back one page. I'm trying to figure out where you are versus where I am. I'm trying to figure out where you are versus where I am. Did the packet get updated? And I just downloaded the an old one. Possible.
Mine's not.
Well, that's not it.
Uh, I see front doors on all of the ones that I've seen, but doesn't mean I couldn't have missed.
It's one where the elevations are on the bottom. But.
Are you sure?
Well, it's just 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 an FYI, you know, we're supposed to, you're supposed to look like this. So just a detail.
Uh, yeah, we we definitely want to make sure they're front doors.
It's for um, the building location.
Is the developer willing to sign up to putting a front door on every unit?
I think it's in the developer.
How about that, John? Can we have a front door?
It's for the
There's like a window or.
Five unit development facing Gordon. Um, you know, there's the two right next to the monument. It's for the one to the west.
I didn't follow you, sorry.
Okay. I'll show you later.
Counsel, I'm going to move this on. I didn't take a motion to either approve or deny this.
So I move that we approve ordinance 2021-17.
And I'll second that.
You have a first and a second. That was Seth and Corinne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jordan Worch, where did you go? I didn't hear you.
Uh, on this one, I'm gonna go aye, just because they did so much to get those extra homes in that I requested. So thank you for working with me on that.
Okay. Uh, Cassie, would you record that for the one, four to one? Let's go to item 14. And you're here. You made it.
Okay, item 14, the towns at city center. So this is one that we have also discussed in the past. The best way I would say to describe this is the one uh north of Corner Noodle in the Walmart parking lot. Uh, so you're looking at 20 townhomes. And the, I would say the biggest issue that we had discussed in the past was parking. Planning commission was very worried about parking. Uh, there was some neighboring property owners that expressed some concern. The applicants here, he can, I'm sure, explain his progress with uh the the parking. Uh, it is part of a private CCNR, which the city does not regulate, but the the CCNRs do have some cross parking easements. So that's good news for for his parking situation. Um, each the so the the mixed use ordinance requires two stalls per unit for the residential, which each each unit has a two car parking garage, except for the the two units that are over the commercial. And uh those ones, they've provided a few stalls there as well. Uh, and then the the commercial portion uh is required to have parking as well. I'm trying to think if I need to explain anything else. Uh, so as as far as the city ordinance goes, uh, we feel that that they do meet the parking requirements of the mixed use. Having said that, this is a rezone, so there are opportunities to look at the project and voice any concerns. This is not an administrative thing. This, you know, if if you guys have to feel that it meets what we need for our city and our and we don't want to avoid any problems with parking. So having said that, um, it's in your court to discuss and decide if there is enough parking and if this project will be a good addition for the town center.
Josh, you want to come uh here where the council can respond to you or you to them? Corinne, do you want to lead us out here?
I'm sorry?
You want to lead us out here?
Sure. Well, first of all, I looked through the the mockup or I don't know what what is the word for that now? Elevations? Thank you. Words are hard today. And I really appreciate the courtyard area. I think that's a really natural gathering spot that's needed in any sort of small community, which this would be. And um, how are things going with working with changing those stalls and that situation?
So we did reach out to neighbors about cross parking agreements, but as we actually did some more investigating and research, as Noah kind of alluded to, the CCNRs are already recorded and were signed by the uh both Walmart and the developer of the city center as a whole. Basically, uh designates um any area that isn't occupied by buildings as common area. And then it talks about how the primary purpose for the common area is for parking. And then um it creates easements across all the common area for um basically for traction, uh traffic, road connections, loading and unloading um as well as parking. And um so anyway, I sent sent the exact language to Noah and to Paul, but essentially I guess, as would make sense when they developed that, they kind of realized that customers were going to bleed over from one project to another and one business to the next. And so they already kind of accounted for that and essentially made all common areas um available for cross parking. And so and it actually says that uh nobody um can charge, I guess, for that right, you know, right there in the CCNRs, too. And so um anyway, we we kind of realized that it's already in place. Um, that being said, we're still trying to get final approval from the O'Reilly's property owner to create the additional nine stalls along the east of the property.
Right.
Um, and that would all be done, of course, on our dime and relocate their dumpster. And anyway, I think it's all advantages for their piece. We're just trying to get final uh approval through them.
Okay, so but it's looks like you're in negotiations and it's going forward.
In negotiations with that, but we do have cross parking with all the neighbors by default.
Okay, good.
Seth, you?
Yeah, so at one point, somebody had mentioned that there was uh CCNRs that would prohibit you guys from even doing this project. Is that? I mean, can you speak to that? I know it's obviously not under the city's purview, but.
Yeah. Yeah, we've reviewed the CCNRs. Our our councils reviewed the CCNRs. Um, it does have some specific things that are they're outlawed that I think would be competitive with the Walmart, which is why I think they were in there. And yeah, it had been brought up um by, I guess, somebody else that, hey, all the owners within that complex need to
Be like a unanimous.
Approve it.
Or something.
Yeah, there's nothing like that. And uh there's two different CCNR documents, and there's nothing like that in any of those documents. So.
So the goal then is to capitalize on the cross access parking. But then still with the goal in sight that the O'Reilly's spots take place.
Well, yeah, we believe we're adequately parked for our our residences. Um, for the the small commercial components in there, there would be some some bleed over. Um, again, these aren't, you know, locations that are going to bring people en masse. You know, they're they are small footprints, and they will be used for small businesses. And so a little bit of cross parking, I think, will 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 work just fine, in our opinion. So.
Thanks. David, do you have any? To me, it sounds like this is incomplete because you haven't heard back from the O'Reilly's property. So we don't know if that will or won't happen. And I still don't see a significant commercial component. It may meet the minimums, but the whole idea of mixed use is that there would be new business added and I just don't see a significant component. So um I I think that we need to hear back from O'Reilly's, and I'm kind of disappointed that there wasn't more of an attempt to to make some kind of business front somewhere. Because I think we still agree that the the west possibility is probably not a real viable commercial spot. I mean, it's there, but you know, you're not, you're not going to be on the front of anybody's main traffic. You're, you know, had you had you gone more down the east side, I could see it creating a little sub business section or even the possibility of doing something bigger by combining areas, but I don't think this serves the need that we have. And that was the purpose of this zone.
Can I address that, Dave?
Yeah, go ahead.
So so just from my perspective, we do believe that the corner, both on the east and the west, are the two best locations. Um, the ordinance requires kind of a a corner tower feature with the mixed use, and I think you've seen that in the elevations, and it kind of ties in with the rest of the commercial there. And really, that Walmart side has more traffic historically than the O'Reilly's side. Maybe with the the cross access now, maybe that will change for the O'Reilly's side, but quite frankly, I prefer to locate my business, you know, on that side. And so we we do believe that it's viable. It does meet the minimums created by the council, but you're right, it's not beyond the minimum. But we believe it's it's exactly what kind of the mixed use was created for, to kind of create density um in commercial areas that will support those businesses, you know, like the Corner Noodle and stuff that was brought up. So we believe this is in its own, I guess, with that, the mixed use architectural motif. It is with the vertical mixed use design. So really, I think it matches the mixed use better than any of the projects that have come forward before, as far as mixed use, in my opinion.
Okay, we'll just agree to disagree there.
It's fair.
Jordan?
Yeah, but Josh and I talked last night and kind of locked along those same lines. I do think that uh the east side is a little better, but I totally get the point. The west side will have a little more visibility from the Walmart side. And if it's something that is along those same lines, I I could see it being successful. So I actually think this is working pretty well. I have this, I do want to find out if we're really going to be able to do all this stuff because yeah, the east side, we need to get that in place. And then my question is, right now, the the commercial goes, kind of pulls back from the residential. So the residential is kind of the the major facade, and then the the commercial pulls back. I I wonder if we could actually this might actually help with Dave's uh complaint, if we can perhaps grow the commercial space so it becomes a prominent feature of that side. Oh, just so that it's a little more, I guess, prominent and you're you're not feeling like it's just shoehorned in next to some residential. Instead, it's a a nice commercial facade that's that has good visibility. And then um has a little more space to be successful.
I I think that just doesn't necessarily uh look right. I don't believe the commercial is recessed, but if in fact it is, we're happy to bring it out or even you bump it out an extra foot or two to be a little more prominent.
But the porches, right, you know, which I think are very welcoming on those corners, actually need to be considered as part of that building.
It protrude out, right?
It they protrude out farther than the other ones. So it you might be looking from a top view, not realizing that those porches, those covered porches are part of that, just as a note.
Maybe so.
Can you just, the concern that I have is that combining your commercial spaces in the same or closer, make them both more viable. But you don't agree with that?
Um, we're still open to putting it on the east side, to be honest. Um, until we get O'Reilly's um thumbs up on that, we didn't want to redesign the the buildings. The facade would have to change. The layout would have to change because the commercial can't be connected, you know, to the residential. And so anyway, there were a few things. So I guess our thought was uh if if this project makes sense to the city council, we would appreciate the zoning vote. And then as we're going through the site plan, um, you know, if the commercial was to relocate to, you know, from the west to the east, the only way that the thing that they specify, you know, one on each side. And so I think we could work through that as we see what O'Reilly's willing to let us do um on their parcel.
Of course, we don't know the future of that business because we do know it's moving, but my thought is that when you combine a couple of spaces together, they seem to support each other better than they do isolated. So.
That and I sure wish like Gins over there in their building had the ability to expand into the building next door. Just it's it's tough to be successful in a small space when you're when you're trying to grow a business, and it's nice if you can just expand into an adjacent slot.
Noah, so i- in this motion with zoning, do we not, are we not marrying them to a uh plan at this point?
Yeah, we're we're approving this plan. If you wanted to add more variation, there'd have to be some
So so if the
That we'll get into more details, but.
Possibly approve zoning with a condition of
Well, no, he just said that we have to approve the plan, so.
He said, though, it can be a conditional approval.
The the if you're just worried about the commercial switching sides, there is a provision as written in the development agreement that would allow the commercial to be on either side. But if there are more modifications to this, then you know, it's better to get you your approval right up front.
So if O'Reilly comes back and says no, does that invalidate this whole plan?
And no.
No.
And no.
And I have a, I I have just a, on principle, an issue with allowing another business to decide whether or not this business is viable or can can uh put commercial on either side. So I would, I would rather address their development proposal, whether or not O'Reilly's comes to pass, we should allow them to to go forward with this. Or or we should be voting on this specific plan or what they're able to do with the crossover parking because it sounds to me like even if O'Reilly's is not, doesn't come to fruition, you still have covered your bases with this crossover parking that is allowed and already in 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 law there. So um, I I just don't believe that 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 this should have anything to do with O'Reilly's deciding whether or not they can connect on either side here.
Josh, do you do you think the most viable option is to have them both on the on the east side? With the option for kind of that transitional extra space?
So this is kind of getting uh you know, maybe it's a little personal bias, but I plan on retaining ownership of the corner one on the Walmart side with the hope of putting my daughter in there um that's going through cosmetology school. And I think it might be a great place for her to live and cut hair on the on the basement side. So I I don't anticipate that side going away. I think we could even potentially add one, though, on the O'Reilly's side if it made sense. But uh, again, without them agreeing to let that parking be in front of it, it would be kind of weird to have all that grass, you know, in front of that.
Doesn't quite work.
Commercial.
Yeah.
But adding space to me helps my concern that it it makes it more of a business area than just a business place, one office. So that would help me learn, but I do understand, you you may lean towards this, but I do understand that you don't have that answer tonight.
Yeah, and we have, just so you know, and we've made contact, you know, probably four times a week.
Not everybody responds, we know.
Yeah, she she's having a difficult time, I think, committing because she is going through a transition with tenants. And so she's having a difficulty like ah, do I commit something without knowing what's going there? Do I want a future, you know, um, I guess tenant to weigh in on this? And so I think she's just kind of been dragging her feet a little bit to.
We just need to tell her this improves access to her business.
The bad part, but
I don't either.
For her, I do understand, you know, you, maybe she's got to come around, but.
Jordan, what did you say?
I I said that we just need to make sure we communicate to her that that this will, this improves access to her business. One of the big complaints O'Reilly always had is it was so hard to get back there. And for the past year, there was a giant pothole, and this is a second access in there that allows for better you know, movement through this whole commercial business area. This this fixes a problem that she has dealt with for years. I just hope we can fix the same issue in the other across the parking lot, but that this will be a huge improvement for for O'Reilly, that building accessibility.
I agree. It's a no brainer for him. We've we've tried to to convey that, and we're still hopeful that it'll happen.
Counsel, can we move this forward tonight?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay.
I guess just how many provisions do we have to put in there that says, hey, we'd really like to, if you find a way to do it, we'd really like that additional commercial on the east. And uh, yeah, we're good with it being on the west, too. So can we approve this uh with the option to add additional commercial in? Is that how you'd word the the motion?
Are you making a motion?
Making the motion? Just did.
Uh, yeah, if I can make that motion, I'm willing to do that, but an approval with that, those stipulations.
You may want to clarify a little more.
Well, so what if O'Reilly's comes back and says no, then then what is this conditional?
Then it falls back to, uh, it's probably best to put it on each corner, and they wouldn't have to put in those additional stalls, but that does uh kind of handicap that uh east building. So I think it behooves everyone to try and get that worked out.
Okay, so restate your motion, Jordan. Okay, so restate your motion, Jordan.
Please.
Boy, this is going to be fun. I move we approve this allowing the option to add additional commercial in and to continue working with O'Reilly to improve the parking on the east side.
That is great. We'll have a second, second. Paul?
I, I think one way to address this, just so you know, through the development agreement, if we just add the word at least before two commercial units in there, then that means that he can build a lot more.
That works for me.
That, that's how we'll do it in the DA, just, you know.
Okay.
Friendly amendment, yay.
Okay, we have a second, second. Second by Seth. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Jordan? Any opposed? Dave is voting against that. Cassie, would you record that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go move to item fifteen, proposed ordinance change for property located at twenty-four hundred west and twenty-seven hundred south. This was the Bennett property that was mentioned earlier in the public comment. So Noah, do you want to lead us through this one?
Yes, sir. So also, we've discussed this one in the past. A lot of the debate and, and conversation surrounded the fact that this will, there's not a lot of ways that you could develop this piece of property. You're going to have a road down the middle and it'll be about nine hundred feet long. And that's a concern for emergency response. But it is a temporary stub road. And what gave, what we talked about last time is we were worried that that stub road would be a dead end for a really long time. Maybe, you know, if something doesn't happen there for a long time, it could be a really long time. So we discovered in our ordinance that you can have one of these dead end roads temporary dead end roads for thirteen, up to thirteen twenty. If you have a permanent cul-de-sac, the maximum length is five hundred. But when, where there's hope that it will go through someday, then you can go a lot further. And so there might be other future potential ordinance amendments pending, but that should be, you know, separate to this decision. The decision here is, do we want this land use here? If you were to grant the zoning, the, from here on out, it's subdivision ordinance. So concept preliminary final, there's no development agreement, which we've become accustomed to with some of the higher density stuff. But the run of the mill by right type development, once you give the, the zoning just proceeds through with the normal subdivision process. So that's, that's, I guess, your decision to decide tonight if you're okay with a temporary dead end that's nine hundred feet. The single family zoning is consistent with our general plan. It's kind of the status quo. It is very near a freeway on the northeastern corner. The applicant did provide me with the letter or an email and send the packet talking about UDOT's plans. I guess some communication that they had with UDOT and is talking about how they plan on surpassing the, putting the project or the property to the north up for auction within the year. So and I, and the applicant, let's see, is here. He could probably give more light on what their negotiations have been with, with UDOT. But from my experience, they, they put them up to auction. In the past, sometimes those properties sit for a long time before they go to auction. But according to this email, it says that maybe they've turned over a new leaf and they have, they're, they need to surplus the property sooner than later because that, that property is valuable. And, you know, it makes sense from a taxpayer basis to not have these large state agencies holding on to millions of dollars for no reason at all. So, but yeah, I think that pretty well briefs where we're at. So the big decision here is, do we want this zoning? And are we okay with a dead end road like that for an unknown period of time?
When you addressed us the last time, you said there was kind of a secret box communication between you and UDOT. Could you come up from front and, and let us know? I know you, you've sent the letter, but we'd like to hear it from you about what you've discovered was in that secret box and about their intent to move forward a little quicker than they normally have.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, counsel, for letting us be here. I think Noah summarized it pretty well. We're just in conversations with UDOT on that piece as they've communicated in the email and to us multiple times. Although they may have been slow in the past, the cost of that West Davis corridor means they're in need of cash. And so the land that they can offload to fund that corridor will be of great interest. And this piece is just right connected to that. There's really no, now that they know where that quarter is going to be, there's no reason for them to hold on to it. And their intent would be to get rid of it as quickly as possible. And our, our intent would be to purchase that and connect that piece in.
And counsel, since we met with him before, I've been, I'm part of the Los Edges Front Regional Councils, their transportation committee. And we had a special meeting with UDOT. They're looking for cash, so I know that they're really trying to sell a lot of this stuff and with, and what they're going to do is continue with, they're going to build projects faster than what they had to do because of the cost.
Can I ask, thank you. How long do you expect this development to take? Will it be in phases or will it just be all at once? You pick which lot you want, what, what's your plan?
I'm here actually representing Ovation Homes and so we're, we're a developer and our intent would be to do it as quickly as possible. There's about, I think, twenty-two homes in the plot. I don't remember off the top of my head, but
Roughly?
So it would be next year, no later than next year.
When you'd be completed with all twenty-two?
That would be our intent because we would start ground improvements no later than the spring. And so if the housing market stays good, which we hope that it does, we would anticipate those being sold middle of next year. And so it would be towards the end of next year, those homes would be completed and or close there too.
Yeah, so you're kind of alluding to the fact that it might be closer to twenty twenty-three.
Beginning of twenty twenty-three at the, at the worst case, of course, housing market.
Yeah.
Lean into that.
Well, and there's this supply problem thing, but hey, lumber's getting better, yay.
Oh, yeah. Well, except those fires in Washington and California and Oregon, Washington are helping.
And do I remember right, these were patio homes or were they, was the intent to be?
Yes, it's an active, active adult. Yes.
And I think, I mean, we've, we know the demand is there. We've gotten requests from citizens in the community just this week, I think.
Yeah, we have done other developments right there in a similar area that have been very well received. So I, I think it would be a good addition to Syracuse City.
Dave, do you have any comment? Well, I, I mean, I think that UDOT's comments are good news for you because they're going to want to offload this quickly. And I just wonder, you know, as close as this is to the, to the freeway zone, we're going to know, we won't know until they decide what that plot looks like, how much land is there. And I'm a little bit concerned when I look at this plot on the map and where it falls, that what if there isn't any room on the backside of this to exit a road? Because that's a possibility.
I don't know, I don't know if you have, but have the map, but
Can we get an overlay?
The corridor is pretty, pretty defined and, you know, all our conversations with UDOT would be that, that there's no, I mean, that's, the road's pretty defined, this property will be developable for all the information that we have.
My understanding is it goes in between the two lots to the east, the, the empty lot between
Yeah, if, if you look at our, if you look at our property, the one we're talking about right there, then there's, it goes right through that property next to it. And that, that triangle piece actually is still owned by the homeowner that owns that, not by UDOT, so.
Yeah, so that's where the outside edge of
Yep, that's us and that property just to the east is still not even owned by UDOT. So it'd be very challenging for them at this point to come in and change the corridor.
So if they're going to make that available within a year, doesn't it allow, I mean, doesn't it make a better option to kind of figure out where that's going to be? I mean, I can see an obvious option, but I'm a little concerned about that because safety's a big deal. We've let people develop, they said, oh, we're going to put this through and then it's thirty years later and
Sure.
I mean, we've, we've had that come back and say, the reason this property never went through is nobody ever developed the one next to it. I don't want to see that happen again. That, that's not a good
Where would you say that happened?
Well, we just had one that
Where? I, I mean, honestly, I, I'm honestly
I would love to just spit out an address, but I can't off the top of my head.
If you're thinking of one, though, kind of, I mean, I honestly am trying to rack my brain and I'm honestly not trying to punch holes and stuff, I really want to know.
I can't name the address off the
The only ones I can think of are the ones on the east side over by the school where with the kids have to go all the way around just because that field is still undeveloped and we haven't, there's no crossings through it. That's the only thing I can think of. I don't know if that's what you were referencing, Dave.
There was one where the road came through and they had a temporary cul-de-sac that we looked at and they said that it had been there for over twenty years. Now, this goes back to when, this is before Golden was here because it was Joe that was explaining the cul-de-sac issue. But I can't name the address. I, I, that would be kind of insane that I could name every address.
I think what you guys are talking about is this one right here where it's just a long dead end and they did provide a stub. And it was just
And it's owned by a private owner.
Forever.
Yeah.
I don't know how many years it was.
I mean, we had kind of a similar situation over on Kularney and St. Andrews, but it actually ended up connecting through. It took a few years for things to get developed by another developer behind there, but it happened, just like it was laid out. So I don't know. Where the, the seller's motivated behind it?
Yeah, there's, I'm sure we could conjure up many examples of
Again, my concern is the safety issue. I mean, how long will this be? Hopefully not very long. If we could, if this could happen within one year and we knew exactly what was going to happen to the continuing piece, I'd feel better about that. That's what I'm saying.
So if, if it does take them approximately, you know, that amount of time to, to build out the, the whole parcel, wouldn't that mean we have, I mean, are you saying a year after complete buildout or?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that if this didn't happen this year, but it happened when the other property was available, I'd feel better because we knew what was going to happen. Whereas if this happened, what happens if nobody wants to follow up on this property? And or, you know, I mean, the housing market could tank and that connecting property could sit there for another decade.
Okay, now we also had the recommendation from planning commission who reviewed this, correct? And went through the fire marshal and on review in that direction. And they would have to provide some sort of hammerhead turnaround if we need, but other than that, it was fine, correct?
Yeah, that, we have our ordinances that they would have to meet. We have, they'd have to have a approved turnaround.
So there's a possibility they may not be able to build the last two lots for a while
Correct.
with the hammerhead and
While there's still room to turn.
And, and water has to be looped.
Right.
Uh, so they'll be limited on the number of lots, they can put off one single
Aaron, Aaron, other than just nodding, do you want to comment at all about that hammerhead? You just nods, okay. Okay.
It's all covered, thank you.
Robert wants me to mention the sewer as well. We want to make sure there's gravity sewer and all of those things would be evaluated. Should it have rezoning and we'd go through the subdivision process? Uh, he wants to say that it's very shallow, shallow sewer.
The reason for the patio homes, good plan.
Yes, we think so.
Well, counsel, the
So let me clear up that because that's a concern. You're saying that if gravity sewer is not available as, as a later evaluation, this could still go through anyway.
Is that what's being said or not?
Because I, that's, that's a problem for me. I don't want to give anybody else the power to approve a lift station in our city.
Robert?
That would never be acceptable.
We've established that before.
That's, that's not what we're saying. What I know is sewer is shallow in this area along both twenty-seven hundred south and to the west, those subdivisions to the west. I think it only has maybe two feet of cover on it. In order, it doesn't mean that it's impossible to develop it. It means that they would have to build up the land in order to accommodate the slope of the sewer line. So it does definitely make it a little bit more difficult, but it's something I, I think the developer needs to be aware of and, and consider it in their application too.
Yeah, and our engineer has, has looked at the property as part of our due diligence process. We recognize we will have to bring in dirt to get that property to the, to the height where we can connect a sewer.
Okay, but that would, that wouldn't, you know, go around us. If, if that works, then gravity sewer, I don't have a problem that somebody else approves that. But anything other than that would have to come back here, right?
We
Yes.
It's an ordinance that we don't allow lift station in.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we don't need to worry about that unless somebody's trying to apply for that and we can deny it.
Yeah, the only way that could happen is if they had, someone applied for a tax change to our ordinance, which would come here. But yeah, that's not permitted.
Building up land, though, too, changes natural surface drainage around neighboring properties.
Right.
So keep that in mind.
That's a concern.
How, how much, how, what high up in elevation do you anticipate or is there one?
It's just, I think, two to three feet.
Okay.
It's not crazy. Else we wouldn't, I mean, else it would become financially unfeasible for us to develop it, right?
Is a four foot drop adequate?
But that means that it's neighbors.
I mean, it's neighboring properties, right? I don't know the situation. Obviously, the, you know, the UDOT's corridor will probably be raised up
Right.
because it's got a bridge right there. So, but as far as other neighboring, I don't know what the topography would look like. I would, you know, hope that their engineer would take a look at that.
So they'd have to provide possibly some storm stormwater areas, so that may eliminate another
Possible.
Yeah, yeah, it may eliminate a lot if we have to do a detention basin, correct?
Okay.
All of these issues would come up, though, before proposed developments would be approved, right? I mean, all of these, we, we go through
See it again.
What's that?
We won't see it before then. We, this is the last time we will see this.
But you are right, those would be resolved
Those would be resolved in order to even be
Built responsibly, yes.
And in order to have this approved, don't, we go through our fire department and, I mean, we go through several layers here to, to say, these are issues and this needs to be resolved. So is this, is it possible that these things wouldn't be resolved?
So I put up on the screen the, the general process. Hopefully this helps answer the, what, what this project would have to go through. So they'll have a concept plan, which is planning, engineering and fire. Then preliminary plan, you start adding more and more detail, so.
So next, if we were to approve the zone change now, we would be going to concept plan, which means all those issues would come up and need to be resolved.
Yep, this is a legislative decision. Do we want the land use there, given the known circumstances of, we, you know, it might be a dead end street for a long time. That might be out of our control. But the, the concerns about sewer and grading and wetlands, that'll all be taken care of with the staff that you've hired. I mean, yeah, they're, they're not going to come before you again for, for rezone. And because we changed the ordinance, you won't see the subdivision. You only see the subdivision with PRD and RPC. So this would be the last time that you see this. So yeah, it's up to you.
Yes, and part of the administrative review is, is applying the ordinances that exist and, and the commission is equipped to do that. And they will hold people and really it starts at the staff level. They hold the, the applicants to those requirements very rigorously.
That's been my experience all along, that we, our staff does an amazing and very thorough job of vetting all of these projects and, and to, you know, to even how, where you're allowed to have your fire hydrant within a few feet. So I, I think, I, I don't have a concern with if that's the case. If we go to concept plan next, I think that that's where they're held.
Counsel member, Mon, I see you shaking your head. Do you disagree?
I do disagree. I think that what's going to happen is you're going to get a neighbor come forward after this is approved and say, you've now created a situation where all the water drains under my property. you've now created a situation where all the water drains under my property. It's never been the case before.
What about storm drains and those requirements that have to be resolved within the development? It, it has to be resolved within the development.
Grading. If you have to lift this property up two to three feet just to get the sewer fall, then that means that you can take care of storm.
I understand.
Property, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't drain naturally to the adjacent properties. Because natural drainage is allowable within the system. So you're going to see people who were not notified to come here tonight, who are going to come back and say, hey, now I've got flooding on my property that was never there before because you allowed for this.
So you think that this will not be resolved and staff can't address this?
I don't.
I would argue that the freeway that's going in just a few feet to the east will be a bigger impact on drainage and everything than this will. Even with that, my, my, my concerns are more emergency vehicle related. But I, I, I think the freeway is going to probably fundamentally alter the flow of, of groundwater or drainage through our city regardless of what happens here.
I think you're right, but my concern is we're, we're approving an alteration for one little finger of property and not considering everything else that's got to be around it. Whereas within maybe twelve months, we'll know so much more about the property around it, but we don't know that today. And so I, I would be of the opinion that we should be cautious and not approve this at this time. It doesn't mean we couldn't approve it within twelve months, but I would want more information.
They, they would like more information, Lisa.
I, I believe that there's no reason, in my opinion, to hold back. We do know what's going on east, on the east side. We know that the, who the property belongs to on the north side and that they will be anxious to, to, to remove it from their coffers and, and to get some money in, in behalf of projects that need to be done. I also believe that this is a temporary subdivision at this point, that it will be growing and progressing. And I also believe that we have a great need right now for patio homes and, and putting it off in, because there isn't, uh, somebody has to be the first lot, right? Somebody has to, to be the first one to start expanding or start developing or, or, and be the initiators of this. And so I believe that the Bennett property would be the initiators of what's about to come to, to pass in the future. So I don't need more information.
Jordan, your concern was.
Yeah, yeah. And that's still one of my concerns. And the other concern is, um, it does feel like we're doing this little piecemeal. If we're willing to just wait, hold off a year, it sounds like suddenly we get to see what everything else is gonna, is, is going to look like. We, we have a good idea now. But UDOT has disappointed me in their ability to offload land time and time again. And so my primary concern right now is focused around just, this is a little piecemeal. It's kind of an island amongst a whole bunch of fields. And I, I personally think that the emergency vehicle, especially where this is a senior community, which historically has a little more frequency of emergency vehicles just due to health concerns. This, this does feel like if we just waited a little bit longer, we could really do possibly even something a little more, what's the word? Anyway, I can't think of it, but it, it, it would, wouldn't feel so piecemeal. It would flow into the area around it if we just wait a little bit longer. And he says he's already had plans of getting that. Again, if we wait a few more months, suddenly he can do a whole development instead of just a dead end road.
Seth?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little torn on this. I mean, I think you've brought up, Dave and Jordan have both brought up some relevant points. Um, and I think when Robert, you're kind of, it seems like at times you're kind of sharing some of those concerns as far as some of the drainage issues is, it'll be your department that likely answers to some of those calls or all of them, I guess. Yeah, it does concern me a little bit that we might be slightly premature on this. But I do think that this is actually the right plan for the right location. So I guess that's where I'm a little torn.
Yeah, I, I like the zone, just not the timing of the build.
Well, it's hard to predict because it could easily time.
Tell Dave to talk into his mic.
And.
And if, if I could, if I can speak, Mayor, Ovation may not be involved in a year, right? That's, you may lose that and you may get, you know, unless you want to change the zoning to ensure patio homes, we may not be in need of a piece of property in Syracuse in a year, right? It's, it's, the, the time is right now for us. Um, and that's why there's emergency from our point. If you feel that there's a need for patio homes, this is the time for us to act. Um, and so, yes, you could, I, I do hear what you're saying about waiting a year, but then that may not be right timing for us and therefore you may not, that, it may be developed in some other way, right? It may just be single family homes.
Well, if we were to consider the same argument, the property that came before you that was used and working on in the city center, we've seen three different designs this year. So if it's, maybe this isn't the right fit for you and you say you're possibly, you could possibly back out, but that doesn't mean that somebody else would do something that would fit.
Sure.
I, I just can't limit my thoughts to this. This is the only chances with everything about.
Um, I do have to say, I, I know the, the owners, the Williams that live right next to, to the west and a large part of that is horse property and there's a large ditch in the front. So I can't imagine that there wouldn't be some way to funnel water oh, away from their home responsibly. Can I, is there, is, am I shooting in the wrong direction? Can I ask?
Yeah, Robert. No shooting in city limits.
Drainage is drainage. You're, you're right. And, and can it be fixed? Sure, it can be fixed. And, and obviously the best way is gravity drainage and you know, you want to be able to pipe it. It's, that's determined in the, the, when they get into development plans, that's something that they would have to address, design and determine how to make that work in a way that the city can actually access it and make it so we can get a large vector truck in there if we need to clean it or get to a detention basin or whatever. I have not seen any plan, any detailed plans or anything like that. So it's really hard to say at this point. So to, I don't want to be, I don't want to be unfair to anyone without knowing.
If, I mean, we have a limited road. We have, let's say the vector truck can get in there technically, but it's extra work. It's a more difficult situation. These are things we should be cautious about.
I, I don't disagree with the caution. I do agree, though, that with, that no, that these will not be worked out unless it moves forward, right? These are going to be unanswered questions until such time as somebody applies and it's approved. So it has to, we have to have faith that the process will work. And, and I have asked, asked everyone here about their opinions, you know, like we have had approval from planning commission. We've had approval from fire marshal. We've had direction given that these things will be addressed as they design. Can it be addressed before design? No. That's the point.
We've also resolved the turnaround. Don't we have this asphalt temporary turnaround at the end that would be for emergency vehicles? Isn't that what we're approving at this point?
Correct.
Or we would be approving if, I mean, that's the plan here. So, so the question of whether or not, if we do have patio homes and, and we haven't developed the rest of the land surrounding it, but we need to get an emergency vehicle in there, it looks like that's part of this development proposal, that there would be a turnaround at the end there to make sure that they're taken care of.
Counsel, I think we're at the point where the action item we're looking at is the zone change. We either can table, we can approve, or we can deny. I'm looking for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we deny.
We have a motion, Dave, and I do have a second. Nope, it's like that, they hope. It failed for a second. Do you have another motion?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approved, approved the zoning for low dis, low, where is the page on this? Sorry.
Fifteen?
That's what I'm. The zoning change from A1 to R3 at the location of twenty-four hundred west, twenty-seven hundred south.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion?
So, Robert, is there, is there information, you said you have not seen adequate information at this point to give us a, a maybe a more educated understanding of this? Is that something that we cannot get because of the way the ordinance rolls or the way the zoning, the rezone rolls out? Or is that something we can have to inform us a little better?
We, we're not approving a plan right now. We don't have plans. The, the only reason I put those, put the, the lot layout in there was just for demonstration purposes only. But there's not a lot of ways the property could really lay out. But with, with the zoning approval, if council wants studies done, you can ask the applicant to do studies. That's up to you guys, though.
So, yeah, the traditionally with the process with, this is, this is like the traditional zoning process. They, they get zoning approvals and then once they've got that, then they're, they're vested in that zoning. And then they can invest comfortably in the engineering required to do those things. Asking them to do it upfront can be difficult for, for applicants to, to invest. That's, that's the concern.
I'm coming from really at this point is this is a, we know there's some inherent challenges that there's going to be things resolving this property's issues. And so I start adding up those challenges. We got the emergency concern. We got drainage concern. We've got the future of what's going to be around it. As a little bit of a concern for me, not, maybe not any one of these causes me to say, yeah, I just don't think it's going to happen, but I think that what I've seen happen is we get into a position where there's maybe not a really good solution, but it technically works. So we have to live with one of those solutions until it can be fixed by a future developer who adjoins in the adjacent property. And I would rather see us do this in a phase that we know everything's going to work and it looks obvious that it's going to work. Not say, oh, sure, there's going to be five challenges and we'll let you work them out. Because they may not work out well. And we're talking about a senior group community that's going to have more issues with some of the need for emergency transportation. At least tends to go that way. I mean, these are all things that I think we should be concerned about. When it looks like it's going to be an obvious yes, we should go forward. When it's not so sure, we could suggest that some of those reasons be worked out before we had changed the stuff.
Call the discussion.
I have a motion to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you even get a second?
I don't need, I don't, do I need a second?
Yeah, she did anyway.
Okay. Do I need a vote to call the question?
No, there was discussion. So now if the discussion's over, then we can proceed to the vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mayor Jordan left the meeting.
Oh, did he leave? Okay. All opposed?
Day.
Okay, that was speed one. Motion passes. Let's go on to number sixteen.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Item number sixteen, what we are calling Briggs North, also known as the one by McDonald's and Smith's. You can see the map here. Uh, I admire your longevity tonight. So since last time, let me bring you up to speed. So this is the previous plan that you saw. So to orient yourself, things are rotated. So north is actually left. So analog drive is to your left. McDonald's is right here to your left. Here's the liquor store. So planning commission reviewed it and forwarded a conditional approval. They were concerned, so this is what we had considered commercial traffic, people going to and from the liquor store, right? Commercial traffic, people coming from McDonald's, commercial traffic coming between the commercial developments, right? So they were, they were concerned about the mixture of this residential and commercial traffic and the backing, people backing out of the driveways. They were also concerned, uh, they've kind of created a, a preference for what, what we've seen with townhome developments is to, is to have, unless they're like right in the town center, to have a driveway in front of the, the two-car garage, which essentially gives four parking stalls for each unit, which is a lot of parking. But, um, as we know, sometimes those garages fill up with things. And so that was their preference is to kind of have some more parking dispersed throughout. They do have some parking here and here. So that was, that was where we left off. Okay? So they've made some revisions to try to address some of those concerns. The primary move here is that they've, they've created this additional drive aisle that bypasses the, so, and separates this commercial traffic from the residential traffic, which alleviates some of that concern. They do have some parking here, uh, as you can see.
There, there.
Let me, let me just, the applicant's here and I'm sure he can explain more of the intricate questions and details that you have. But let me, let me present, uh, kind of what we're seeing as a staff and, and we've reviewed this. We remember last time we talked a lot about front porches. It's kind of an ongoing issue. We want to make sure we get it right. The ordinance just says two chairs and a walkway. So here's a little bit more of a illustrative plan. You can see that they'll have a lot of open spaces of detention basin, a lot of landscaping along, around the periphery. Also new to this plan is this unit right here. This is actually a three-story unit right here. These are all two-story townhomes. And then this commercial multi-tenant building is, uh, like we discussed, part of the plan, but not, uh, in, part of the plan in spirit, but not by the letter of the law, maybe. So let me, let me show you. So what they've provided here is twelve feet. So you have six feet per, per entryway. And that, that's, um, in conformance with how staff has been interpreting the ordinance. But it is a little weird to have, I think, the chairs facing sideways. And as a, as a, you know, I think, I don't want to get this totally clogged up in a separate legislative discussion about front porches because I do think that that is something that we need more conversation about is, Lisa brought up earlier. But I'll, I'll just quickly review the reasoning behind having front porches is to create uh, an environment where there's surveillance. We believe that surveillance improves safety. Now, whether or not people actually hang out on these porches, you know, that's where we're looking at the design to see. Is this a design where we think that that will actually meet our intent? So when you have eyeballs and people looking at what's going on, keeps people honest. Also, there's a, a certain aesthetic to our brand of what we want in, in the city, the front porches and the decorations and the welcoming, you know, entryway. I'll, I'll just leave it at that because I know that there needs to be further discussion on, on porches. But regardless, they, they, they did some work here to provide a design that was in conformance with how we've been interpreting the ordinance. Each porch is six feet. They have windows in the doors. They've broken up the roof lines. Each unit has two-car garage. Let me show you the, the three-story. One thing I'll point out too that is a little bit ironic is that these units are actually at one time in a different alternate universe, these, these work perfectly to be a rear-fed design. So look at these front porches that are all actually on the back of the units. Beautiful front porches, no argument. The chairs could face forward like normal porches. But some of the reasoning for not actually doing a traditional rear-fed design is because it adds extra asphalt and cost to the project. Let me show you this, uh, the three-story. the three story. So they have a variety of architecture, depending on whether it's four, four units attached or five units attached. We allow up to six units attached. So here you, you see this, the three story design and this one actually is rear fed. So you see the nice, uh, you know, it's just a aesthetic, more aesthetically pleasing than the garages tend to be a little bit more monotonous. So that would be facing the rear. This, a mixed use development does require a development agreement, which we do not have completed at this time. So that is a concern of staff. Um, in the past, we've kind of given certain instruction with, to staff to make it happen, but I don't, I don't feel very comfortable with that, to be honest. And if, if you allow me to just go over a few of my other concerns that I have, there are more, they're not necessarily ordinance things, but they are concerns that I'm seeing with the development. And this intersection as you come in is the first one. Uh, so if we're looking at convenience into a shopping center, the way it is currently, if you were to just look at this aerial right here, there's, you come in and there's one turn and you're there. But the way it's proposed, it actually takes it from a one turn situation to a one, two, three. So you're adding turning movements into a shopping center. And granted, I don't know how important this, I mean, to be fair, I don't know how important and used, I don't have any traffic data for the usage of this. Because I think the main entrance and dismiss is actually west of McDonald's, but economic development access is really important. And I already talked about the concern with the front porches. I think that the, if there were a way to actually face the rear of these as they're designed towards a drive aisle and have a little private alleyway in the back, that would be, provide a lot better architecture. And then the third is the planning commission. I think that you've resolved the, uh, the issue with, with the shared traffic, but I don't know if they've really, uh, addressed that concern to provide any parking in front of the actual garages of the unit, but that's not an ordinance thing. That's kind of a planning commission preference. So that would be up to you if, whether or not you felt that was important um, in this context. And like I said, the DA is not done. And then if I can just speak to the, the uh, exclusion of this commercial building to the mixed use project. I'm very worried that we're creating a precedent in how these commercial, or how these mixed use projects are coming. By, by allowing them to exclude the commercial building, is what I'm worried about is that now every time we have a commercial use that's interested in coming to the city, like whatever, fast food, they're going to partner with a multifamily developer and say, oh hey, this is an opportunity to get maybe in multifamily attached to this and, and we don't even have to do the architecture and we'll just exclude it. So I think that sets a precedent for other future projects to not follow the mixed use ordinance. So I would, you know, it's up to you, but I would recommend actually including, requiring them to include the commercial altogether. But again, that's, um, where we've kind of created a little bit of a loophole. And I don't know if we have to, I don't know if it's a good idea to, to let it be exploited. We don't have to let it, in my opinion. But those are the, kind of the five concerns. This is a legislative decision. I think, uh, you know, there are, they've made some good improvements to the plan from what we've seen last time. There are still some concerns.
Dave, with Jordan gone, do you want to start this?
Well.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, as we get into discussion, if, I know it's kind of hard to remember when we're thinking about what we're talking about, just for everybody to speak in the microphone for people on Zoom.
Okay.
Thanks.
So initially, the red flag for me is that we generally require these to be complete applications and this is not. So I think that the very best we could do tonight is table it until it is a complete application because without that agreement that staff has put a, a premium on and expects, we're not getting a complete application. And I, I think we should stop hearing those, but I have other concerns, but to me, that, that's just really basic. I mean, the, the application is not complete.
Seth, how do you feel?
I'm like, yeah, I would like to see the development agreement. I think in, um, accordance with what Noah has brought up, I think, I think the motif, the architectural motif of the commercial building following the M X D zone would be, I'd like to see the, you know, the concessions are where we got somewhat closer to that. And I don't know that we've had a chance to kind of hear that piece. Um, would you be able to speak to that at all, or if there's been anything done in that regard?
Yeah. Um, so the two areas of primary concern with the, um, mixed use zone architectural requirements on the commercial is um, having first four front doors open up to Antelope and crossing those two drive-throughs on the thing, on the building and then having two story requirement. Um, we have some tenants lined up and I'm confident they would walk away if that happened. I mean, that's the city's prerogative to choose if that's how you'd like to interpret it. But, uh, you know, I understand those points on the loophole, um, argument, and I, I don't think those are unfair points. Um, and then just real quick, Noah has been incredibly responsive as we've gone back and forth on this. We've had a lot of sketches back and forth and it has been fantastic and just wanted to say, say thanks to Noah there. Um, but yeah, those are the two concerns, Seth. Um, and I just, you know, I think we can empower commercial to happen here with this mixed use, uh, ordinance here. And I think that helps achieve one of the major goals of the mixed use ordinance. I don't think it's betraying all the intent of it.
No, and I, I agree with part, part of those statements. I, I think like, uh, there's some elements there, like we've seen examples of, you know, service doors and gas meters and stuff like that. They're facing Antelope and we talked about this before when it was the first project, that this had to be kind of the entrance to the city, right? And we wanted to make sure first, one of the first mixed use projects as well as the entrance to the city really needed to have that aesthetic, uh, you know, vision that we were hoping to see. And so I guess that's where, what are we seeing on these sides of the, you know, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be service entrances and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, you know, there's a building, I don't know if you know the Costa Vida building, um, in West Point by the Smiths.
Has the same setup, right?
It's, we're modeled it exactly. In fact, we had some elevations put together on initial application when we were going to include this in the mixed use zone, um, that were, that were just like that. Um, so that's our intent and our purpose and, you know, we're, we're happy to screen those things as well as possible. I know Noah showed me at least some elevations of a building in, forget the city, but you could see the meters, landscaping wasn't quite covering it. It might've been a little bit of a maintenance issue, but, uh, that's the building that, that the footprint, um, which is also double drive through was modeled after. So you can see the meters there. Um, I think it's an attractive building, you know, it's, it's not pedestrian access to the street. Those doors aren't very functional in terms of pedestrians walking in, but here's what it is, is real commercial. It's not faux commercial. It's not, it's not an office that may never get filled and, um,
I guess the question I have is like, is that mixed use at Smiths and did it work? And if we agree with that, then maybe we need to then reconsider how stringent we want to follow the standards. And I don't, I don't know. That's just kind of a question for the fellow council members here. Like, do we think that that Smiths worked there as a mixed use example for us and you know, I think most would argue it's pretty, pretty solid.
Well, we have, we have, we did some apartments right there by Smiths that are.
I know you did, but was, was it zoned separately or was it zoned as a mixed use?
It was not zoned mixed use. Those are two separate zones, but I would argue it serves as a horizontal mixed use example. Not a vertical mixed use by any stretch, yeah.
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of debate about, you know, and we said, why don't we just enact a dang apartment zone then? If there's no demand to do this other alternative, alternative design, um, you know, that's, that's where a lot of our debate has been surrounded of, if we want to stick to our vision of what mixed use is.
Yeah. And I think the mixed use was a tool to get commercial into the city is, I guess, the piece where I get a little bit hung up on just because it, it is getting commercial into the city and, and this is a project that works with the neighbors. I do want to not have that. I don't want that picture there.
Except for, there was an agreement with those neighbors and that is not binding on the city. It is not official. None of that is, but in that agreement, it says there will be no three story.
We, we've talked with the neighbors and verbally, um, that's not going to be an issue and we could present something to the city if that would make you guys feel more comfortable um, on that, especially in the limited fashion, but you know, I'd be happy to share that with you guys in an email or something, but we, we're, we're not intending on betraying any agreements with any neighbors. And, um, before we move forward, we would, we would work that out with them. Obviously that's between us and them, but.
Yeah. That was new, right? From this last iteration? And was that just something to get a, a higher, a bigger side?
So, yeah, when we, when we redid that road, which one advantage that Noah actually pointed us to was we'll just follow the current road that's there and not have to move utilities or disrupt their business in any way. We just didn't have the depth to fit another front load. The, the, those rear loaded three stories are just a little narrower. So that was the, that was the intent is to kind of shift that building and, uh, we just couldn't quite fit another uh, front load. And then we thought that it, that those front porches would face a, a more visible area and, and sort of contribute in a small way to that atmosphere that the mixed use zone was trying to accomplish.
Makes sense.
Corinne?
Earlier this week, I was in Logan helping my daughter. She had surgery. Anyway, driving through, noticed the Mavericks that Noah talked about a while ago where they put in the what looked like the front entrance there, but noticed it was a facade entrance in Logan. And then they have the drive aisle coming around in front. If that's kind of, is that what you're wanting, Noah? Is some sort of facade looking entrance just for appeal or because we have a double drive lane? I just want to clarify on what's, what's your goal? And I know that you've got like some background in this, so.
So yeah, that, it's like trying to paraphrase a lot of information. I think the, the main goal with these urban design standards, remember we talked a lot about pedestrian safety.
Yeah, I totally, yeah, but we have a double drive aisle, so I'm kind of worried about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, so there would have to be some changes to the, and I think minor modifications to what they've already got, but it, it is more work to, to, to change what, what they've already wanting, what they want to propose. So the, the front doors facing the street, you can see here's an example in Heber. The, these doors face the street.
Right, but they don't have a double drive aisle for a drive through, right?
I know. So that's something to decide if, if we want. I, I could provide examples of, uh, like in Saratoga Springs where there are safe pedestrian crossings across drive aisles. They, you can do stamped concrete, you can do what they call bowl bouts, you can do landscaping, signage, you know, there's ways to cross a, a drive aisle. I don't think that would be a dill killer at any means. You know, from an urban design perspective, it, that, I would say what you're seeing on the screen is kind of like the gold standard of what a multi-tenant building could be along a highway, but maybe that's not feasible in all circumstances. We're not Heber Main Street.
Okay.
But maybe we want to, we, we got to strike, we have a vision that's like, kind of like what's on this, on the screen. And now we got to decide if we want to stick to it or if we want to be more like Saratoga Springs than, you know, than a Main Street.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then just I think that where you're going with this, it really, you've worked really hard on trying to make this work. I'm, I don't know if I don't know. I think in some ways, having that extra turn in there will discourage people from using that other entrance. And that's fine because it, it will encourage them from you, to use the commercial space over there. And I'm saying like getting over to the liquor store. Do you know what I mean? They're, they're going to be motivated to go over to the other side. And, and in some ways, I think that's addresses some of the safety issues that we were talking about with the pedestrians, which we were, we're saying, hey, you got to resolve this pedestrian issue right now. You know, with backing out and into a drive aisle as well. And so.
Mr. Speaker, yesterday, the United States was suddenly and liberately attacked by the Empire of Japan.
Now that we know about Pearl Harbor.
Take a nap?
Okay. Anyway, so, um, but I think that you're addressing the things that we're throwing at you and I, I don't mind the three story at all because it's farther away from the other townhomes who are worried about that with their vision in the backyard. You guys have gotten above and beyond on this, in my opinion, because technically according to our approval, we have already approved the other plan. So I like it.
Thank you. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind if I interjected, um, I forgot what I was going to say. Sorry.
I'll try to remember. Why would you be distracted right now?
I, I'm trying to not relive Pearl Harbor.
Well, in looking at the two, two different, the Heber and the Saratoga, I believe that Syracuse is, that area is more like Saratoga Springs with the, that road is faster. It's not so much a city, um, of, you know, a neighborhood street. Seventeen hundred is fast and, and busy. And I think that we, I think this is hard. So I do keep going back to what's the point of mixed use and what was the whole idea behind it? And we have to keep remembering not to move that target. It was to get more commercial here. So we need the tax base and we need to keep people in our city. And, and we've talked about growing that tax base and growing the commercial space in so many ways, and this has been a facilitator for it. So I think we need to be careful not to get, uh, too hung up on, um, on if there's a front entrance as opposed to is this viable commercial space that will actually bring customers in? Uh, I don't think we're really going to have anybody using that west entrance. Um, that takes a few turns to get into the grocery area or McDonald's or anything, because you have a couple of other entrances to get in there. Um, you have that one on the west side and you can, you, you can even go in the out area of the McDonald's if you want to get really pushy there. So, um, I, I, I don't know. Uh, and I do appreciate the idea of the loophole. We don't want to turn it into, it's just an apartment structure, but and we want all of this commercial to look nice. But I do think that there are ways that we can shield the drive area or, or at least shield the, um, the undesirable area of the side of, of the back end to go through the drive aisles. And I do think you're going to have a lot more potential for customers for commercial space if we have a drive through.
Thank you. I, I did remember now, Mayor. Thank you. So when we left this meeting last, there was three major issues that you as the council decided, resolve the park, the people backing out of the lane. I think we've killed that. Um, it was clear that the council didn't feel like that mixed use architecture needed to be applied to the commercial. Our argument is because we can deliver really good commercial if that's the case. If not, I guarantee I lose my tenants and we're back to square one. And then, um, lastly, there was a little bit of upgraded architecture from you, Lisa, and we tried to get the architects to add some additional features, change the roof lines from that shed, um, and, and add a few different elements on there. And, and so we tried our best to do that as, as effectively and clearly to the council's direction as we could. And I think we've done that. In terms of the development agreement, when we did the Holt development agreement and the Briggs one, there was a lot of details to be worked out. You guys approved the text in the document and I expect the, the format to be very similar. I don't think, and I know Noah expressed that it's uncomfortable and I respect that, but in our experience, um, it was not contentious when we went back and forth with Paul and Noah. We just worked out the details that were clear in the minutes of the meeting. And so, um, I would respectfully request an approval on, on this tonight with the condition that we work through the development agreement. We, and we'd be comfortable with some, some nice teeth on this commercial, like it's got to come first or something like that because we're ready to deliver on it. And I can't make those applications for commercial until I know my zoning on this other piece.
Council, we need to act.
Yeah, if I could just in, interject real quick. So we don't even have even like a draft that we've circulated at all on, on this particular DA. So I, I really don't feel comfortable with, with recommending the council approve that. What we really need is, is, in my view, the, the council's input, especially on this commercial property, because if, if the rezon happens and it becomes commercially zoned, then we apply the commercial zoning, you know, the G C, uh, whatever applies those standards. If there's some If there's some architectural features that you want or need, then now is the time to, to say so, because then we can put it in the agreement. And if it's developer doesn't agree with it, then, then we talk about it. If they agree with it, then it's fine. It's in the agreement. It's in, it's in writing and, and we'll. You know, it'll happen. Uh, but now is the time for those things. Otherwise this will, you know, this will be developed just using the, the general commercial standard. So if there are things you want, please let us know and then we'll put those in the DA. If you don't care, then let us know that too. And then we'll just see that in the DA.
And what I'm hearing is you want to at least have an outline of a DA before.
Yeah, I, I really don't, I, I've been, since last year, I've really been opposed to having any, any DA details worked out after the fact. I, I don't, I don't think it works out very well. That's, that's been my experience.
Paul, I apologize. I misrepresented our experience there. Sorry about that. I thought it was great.
Dave, you want to make him up?
It wasn't just our experience. It's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not you. It's me.
I think that makes it right now a pretty easy decision to make the motion that table pending having a development agreement. So that we could go for, forward correctly.
The motion to table.
Do I have a second?
Well, I think we do want to highlight.
Yeah, if, if you can give me direction, then we can make sure the draft is, is solid and ready.
Thank you.
So we're not spinning wheels next time.
Yeah, because yeah, we need to, so if you can just kind of let us know with that commercial building. Do you just want us to apply the GC zoning standards or do you want something else?
What's the likelihood we can get those gas, uh, gas meters moved to the sides like east, west? Um, service entrances minimized or landscaped over and.
Or do the gas meters, can they have an enclosure around them to?
It would still kind of look, I, I'm thinking still like kind of the back. I mean, well, it is the back. So I don't know. Anything we can do to make it look.
The, the utility companies often tell us where to put the gas meters and as immovable as cities can be, utility companies are even less. But in terms of if there's general conditions, like we want them to be screened or not out of, you know, I, I cannot commit to a location without Dominion Energy.
Could say that you're going to mask them.
Absolutely.
Some kind of covering that blends with the, uh, uh, architecture and wall.
Yeah.
But they have to be acceptable.
Because I've seen people try to mask them with something that doesn't look at all, looks very industrial and out of place.
Yeah.
So we could put in there that condition.
Absolutely. Yeah. Painting, um, covering with landscaping, building elements. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and you know, I wouldn't suggest the landscaping, uh, just because we're talking about spending money to zero scape so much of our city. We don't want to add more.
It could be some cacti.
I know it costs money to run sprinkler lines and to get somebody to mow a two by four inch swath of something or other. Um, so I think that we should be really careful about what we're asking. I, I agree with David. It should be something that is cohesive with the building materials. And maybe we require whatever that level is, if that level is, is, let's say it's brick on that level, then that needs to be screened with brick.
Noah?
I just want to say, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, in the current general commercial requirements and our architectural requirements, we already have.
Thank you.
All of that stuff already in there. So. I, I'll, I'll just go back to my initial concern of if. If they don't want to do mixed use and if we're more, if this particular site is not necessarily a mixed use site. Rather, you know, because we are setting a precedent that I'm very worried about of having a mixed use project that's not mixed use and.
Your concern, the, the elevation, the facade, that it doesn't look like it's cohesive with the rest of it?
Or that it's not walkable without a front entrance?
No, my.
That's why I was trying to ask you those questions.
Sure. No, my, my concern is, is that. Uh, if, if we approve a mixed use project without requiring the architecture on the commercial. Every other project from here on out.
Yeah.
Is going to have a watered down commercial component. And, and so I would, I would much rather prefer, if we want to do it the traditional suburban way. I would much rather prefer to just use a general commercial zone and a residential zone because we are, we're watering down our mixed use ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I, I think that they could bring this into conformance with the mixed use standards by putting a pedestrian crossing, a pedestrian. Walkway across those, those two, and it says two stories. But that could be like, if you look at the one in West Point, I would consider that to be two stories. And then the, the entryways, we would need to look at a, at a way, maybe one or two of them have a doorway out that's. That would meet the ordinance. So I think there's some minor modifications that they could do to the plan to bring it within a conformance without setting a precedent. That hinders our ability to attract a true mixed use in the future.
So we could do like a raised walkway. How would, would you be amenable?
I'll lose the tenant. So it's, it's a matter of the floor plan on the inside. If they have a drive-through, their kitchen and, and their workspace and their drive-through is in the back, there's. I can't get a, a, a public walkway through that and then across the, the highway or across not the highway, sorry, across the drive-through. And so I, I can deliver better tenants, better tax revenue if I have the general commercial zone. And I still think it accomplishes the goal of the mixed use zone of empowering commercial to come. But, um, I'm just worried that the, the building in, in West Point looks two stories. It's not two-story. And as I watched Josh Hughes' application come on and look to, I just, I don't want to walk into that buzzsaw.
Didn't really land too well.
Sign a contract with a tenant and then can't.
Yeah, we, we, when we, when we created the mixed use ordinance, we, we really. Recognized our position as a city, as a suburban city. And some of the elements of mixed use are more of an urban element. And so. Like, like I said, if, if, if we want just the standard suburban style building, like they're. Well-equipped to deliver with tenants that go into suburban style, let's just use the tools that we already have for suburban development, which is general commercial and PRD. But the problem with the PRD is that in this particular context, it, it doesn't give them the density that they want to develop at. Maybe that's our prerogative as a city of whether or not we want that level of density. I, I, I'm, like I said, I'm just really concerned about using a mixed use zone out of context that.
That implies that their only real appeal to the mixed use zone is density.
Yeah, the only reason people are using this zone is for the density numbers. They don't want to use the mixed use zone. They don't want to build mixed.
We want the commercial, so.
They'll build the commercial. They have a tenant. It's, this is happening. I mean.
So.
But if, if they want to use the mixed use, it creates a problem or if we require them to do the mixed use, it's a problem.
So you're saying to have them reapply for zoning is that, I'm trying to figure out what you're saying, Noah, because there's a lot of what you're saying.
If I could interject, we have a, we have a currently approved development agreement right now.
Right.
And, um, this is our attempt to try to make this project work. And so this is, this is what we think can replace that. And, um, I would lie to you if unit count didn't play a role in, in our ability to make this site plan fly based on what we paid for the property. But I, I would never advise you to go against the advice of your attorney. So it seems clear that we need to come back with a draft, a development agreement. And, um, I would just request that we can be clear to the attorney on what that language needs to be for the commercial.
So because our next meeting is not a business meeting and the motion is already going to be to table this so that we can. See the development agreement, could we not preview this in our next work session?
Sure.
Before our next meeting?
We could.
You don't have to resolve the development agreement tonight?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I was, yeah, I didn't think we could. I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, you're looking for some guidance there and I'm, I'm thinking.
Maybe a little more time.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So what, yeah, what, what I've got is, is allow the general commercial development, but with the requirement for masking the, uh, you know, the utility meters. Are there any other things that you want? Or do you want to say we want the architecture of the mixed use development minus certain things that are problematic? Or there, there's lots of ways we can skin this.
Okay.
We could say that we want the, this commercial area built in the same materials, can't we?
Yeah.
Is, is that something that's, that's amenable for you as well as your tenant that you have?
Absolutely.
On.
It's just two items. It's first, it's first four front doors to the street and it's two stories.
So, and I, so we are saying, I don't think that, I think you're right, Noah. It's not a mixed use, but we could implement. Giving it a general idea of mixed use or at least having the buildings be complimentary. It gives us commercial. It gives them the, the density they need to make it viable and it gives us an actual commercial space that can, that will be successful.
Yeah, for economic development, we, we want the commercial space. Cause what I'm warning you against is that in the future, we will see projects that has a commercial component that will want to use the same process.
So we will, so this needs to not be mixed use.
It's up to you, but there will be future projects where they'll say, I want to build this residential component because. Your other residential zones don't allow the density that I need. And, um, I'm going to build this commercial, but I don't want to follow your mixed use standards. So it's going to be a thing like in the future if we use this.
You're suggesting that we keep it mixed use and, and, and resist the idea of not having it conform.
In, in my, I would recommend, and again, do whatever you guys think, uh, you, I would recommend keeping it all mixed use. That's so much cleaner. Or the second option, I would recommend doing general commercial on the commercial building. And a residential, a separate residential zone for the back part.
So would we just?
Where are we at with density on the back though? Are we, we're not even within the.
We'd have to.
Nine units breaker is what they could do.
Really been applied for.
No, uh, that is not what they applied for. So.
But we could do it on our own is what you're saying. Kind of like that last situation.
So this.
They've been noticed. Just saying.
We, we have application that we need to provide a decision on, which is approve, table, deny, or approve with conditions.
I call the question, I made a motion to table.
But we need, don't we need an idea to let them go forward?
I think we just agreed we could do it in the next work session.
That will be.
Paul, do you have, do you have enough information to begin to start to write that?
Yeah, I, I can get a lot of the DA done. A lot of it's already, um, drafted, but just as a matter of, I was waiting for a lot of these architectural things to be. Put in so we could.
I think, sorry, I think what Councilmember Mon is saying is have that discussion on the 27th.
On the 27th.
Not the DA discussion, not, not the actual draft DA. Is it?
But like to what, what elements of?
Brody understands.
Because we can't vote next time anyway.
That's right.
That's fine.
Because it's happening that process anyway.
Yes.
Hey, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Seth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carrie.
Thank you.
Brody, let's talk about, uh. Turf conversion.
Okay, hold on there. No, that's not what I want. Okay, in your packet, there is a, a memo describing our options here for converting turf to low water landscaping around City Hall and the community center. We had an idea already looked at during Heritage Days. It reminded us that those four corners are used. Uh, particularly during, um, fireworks show. Uh, there are people, uh, on this, on the community center side especially that. That tend to, you know, wait under a tree there for a ride or whatnot, um, routinely, but. You know, there's, there's other trees there and other grass areas also. So this, this memo outlines three options that are about the same ballpark as, as, as far as our cost estimates go. And they, you know, and they have slightly different pros and cons. I won't go through that. I know there's, uh, there's a memo there for you that you've already read, so. The only other input I have for you for this discussion, um, Councilmember Savage with, um, who doesn't have internet coverage right now. He did text over to us, uh, that he's still supportive of option one. So I'll give that to you. But, but he's not voting. And, and we're not necessarily voting on this anyway. I, I apologize. This isn't a vote. You're just giving direction to us.
Okay.
Seth?
Can you, can you scroll down to two and like this, two and three? I mean, if we're, the, the battle, I guess we have is against like visibility and optics versus utility. And I think the biggest water waste to me seems to be more on the long linear strips that are just getting blown across both sides and not getting great coverage. So for that reason, I would opt to go with the areas, an option like three that addresses more of the long linear strips where the biggest waste of water comes. And I think that's again, goes down to that messaging where we're, where we're describing to our constituents here that. We are making efforts. Maybe they're not as visibly obvious as some of those bigger rounder parcels, but. These are inefficient for, you know, clipping and, and for watering and all, and all purposes. So that's, that's the reason I was thinking towards option three.
Corinne?
I was thinking exactly the same. And, and I know it's can possibly be more work, but. We're, it'll, I think the payoff for the water is okay.
Well, and I know that our, our, uh, park strip just looks like junk all the time because of the heat off the asphalt just burns it and. We, we just, we've even replanted and sodded and, and put, uh, down seed and it just can't recover because of the heat. So I, I think my only issue here is that this is a lot of coverage. We're, we're just talking about doing a certain amount of that at this time, right? It's not all of this that we're hitting at once, is it? Because.
It's this one, right?
It's, will that be the fifth?
Whatever option, it's all.
Like how much money did we set aside for it? Will that?
Five thousand?
So, so what we did is, uh, option one was what was discussed at the previous meeting and it's approximately 12,000 square feet.
Okay, they're all about the same.
And so they're all about that same.
A lot more that we're hitting there, so.
Fifty K or so, right?
Yeah. Option two is, is a little bigger, but, um, one, one caveat to option two and three. There's a, there is a section behind City Hall that, a small section that might actually be taken up by, uh, one of the fiber huts.
So we wouldn't have to do that part.
That's what it is. Great.
Anyway, I'm for, I'm for the strip areas.
So three?
Sorry. Yes, number three. I thought you were talking about the, the amount of us saying yes so far, but yeah.
I agree with everybody. Seth hit the nail on the head. The skinnier areas are the greater area of water loss. And I do think that if we convert those first, it goes along with our message to citizens. That that's a good place for them to start is to convert those areas where the most water loss happens. So I think it's a, a better message to start there than the bigger areas. I do realize that the bigger areas take a little maintenance, but. You know, I'm, I'm less worried that there's once a year a blanket there. I'm more worried that about the water waste that goes with skinny areas.
There is a lot of overspray.
Overspray, exact.
Yeah, and, uh, parking strips are certainly less efficient. Um, in terms of the amount of water being used.
Yeah.
A lot of times it's just the square footage period that you're watering.
Yeah.
So, so the water, the water savings may not be as big a difference, but the efficiency of the water you are putting on is, is a lot less in the parking strip.
And then whatever the low maintenance, uh, plantings that you guys had recommended down below make perfect sense to me, whatever it was that was the simplified, I think you said, right? Or minimalist?
Yeah, and that, that was the main point we wanted to, to represent to you was the, the, if we do the parking strips. There, there is possibly a little more cost in maintenance to make sure it doesn't. Uh, because it is a more hostile environment for, for the plantings, like Councilmember being a mention, but. It also behaves differently than behind the sidewalk to, to the eye. And so we would have to pay a lot more attention to that.
I, I, you know. I, I don't want to put too much emphasis on the vegetation, but we do want some because we want it to be beautified. But the rock just seems easier to take care of than chips and, and mulch.
Doesn't blow away.
Yeah, well, and the mulch, yeah, it does it.
Yeah, and these costs.
Has to be replaced. Rock never has to be replaced.
That's true. And these cost estimates did include rock as the mulch.
Okay, so I'm, I'm very in favor of that because of the longevity.
Yeah.
Brody, do you have what you need?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'd like to suggest that, that the work session too, we talk about the flipping turf. That Robert proposed that the, that the public works people be involved throughout the next year of stripping. And have it, have the council weigh in on what their feelings are. Can we add that to the, to the 27th work session, Cassie?
Hey, we haven't, we haven't announced that for this one, so let's move on. We're at a point where we need to reopen our meeting to public comment, I don't see anybody here. And I don't see anybody on the web, so I guess we can over, we can pass that over, let's go to the announcements, let's start with Lisa.
So we have. With the Chamber of Commerce, West Davis Chamber of Commerce, we'll be having Weber Basin come and speak next week, if anybody wants to attend to that. In fact, let me just look that up real quick, so we've got Weber Basin for 30 minutes, starting at one o'clock. Next Tuesday, and then in August, we'll be having our CTC come and speak for a few minutes there about the illumination event. As well as we have UDOT coming that week on the 17th. So if anybody, any, any just citizens or businesses want to come and kind of find out what, how our water is and and what their rights are or what their needs are. And the same with UDOT and how it will impact them. And CTC, we've talked about inviting all of the kids from the area for the illumination event, which is going to be September 1st. And that will have Sarah Frye as our guest speaker and is it James Violet? Who will be our singer slash speaker and anyway, guest, guest stars of Syracuse. And then, and just, just as a background, this is about mental wellness for our community and and our kids. And then we'll have a big fireworks show at the end of it, so those are great things. And we're also working on doing a teacher appreciation where we've sorted through just thousands of items that can be used as incentives for kids and teachers to give to the kids. And and as well as school supplies, so we've gone through sorting that in the last month and we'll be giving that to them in a few weeks. So I think that's it.
Thank you, David?
I don't have any things significant to announce.
Okay, Seth?
Just in my liaison role with Syracuse High, I spoke with Principal Johansson and he just wanted to kind of inform the council and and I guess generally our our citizens. That they are taking a prioritization of their watering to their playing fields. And so you'll see, you know, I mean, it makes all the sense in the world that we just talked about that today, but their playing fields will be prioritized where they'll have. Opportunities for their kids to, you know, participate in sports and such, and so because of that. Their park strips will be rather burnt out and the front areas will be pretty bad, so, you know, it's, it's something we all recognize and understand, but they just wanted to kind of. Stress that they still want to be a focal point in their community, but they think by putting the efforts where the kids will be is most important, so.
Yeah, it's been several months, but I ran into him and talked to him about just maintaining where all those pragmity were out in front. And he said that the district had mentioned possibly just converting some of that area to something less vegetative. I don't know what they're doing, I see they are doing something out there, but maybe that's it, maybe it's not, I'm just, that goes along with your comment, I thought I'd throw that out.
That's good.
Chris, or Corinne?
Hey, just a few things about the museum, they have the demonstration coming up soon with for the forge. And they're going, they have two blacksmiths who are really excellent that they're working with to come. And one of them's thrilled to, is super, super good expert at forging. And they want to actually have some items for children, like for instance, the, the. Forge nails that they make into rings, they're, they're working on having a bunch of those pre-made ahead of time, so if you have a little kid who's interested in that. And just tell your husbands and if you're interested in knife forging yourself, I think it'd be pretty awesome. Then also, they're working with Antelope Island on, I can't remember the name of it, Cowboy. Something or other, it's, it has the cowboy poetry, but there's also some other things that go along with it. But they've had that event at Antelope Island in the past around Memorial Day. And it's not been very well attended, and so they're working with the museum to have one night out at the island and one night here at the museum. And we're talking about doing it in the fall because COVID kind of put the kibosh on it for the last couple of years. And so we're really excited that they're the ones initiating that, although they do have a little bit of motivation. With getting Antelope to be more motivated to do the work, so, anyway, but all hands are on deck with trying to get that going. But look forward to more information to a cowboy festival type situation coming and shared. Oh, and the great thing about it is it's using county and state money and not ours, since it's state park. So it won't be using our monies, but it will help them promote their island as well, and they see the benefits in that. And we're really, I'm really proud of those guys, so thank you.
I want to recognize Corinne and her efforts with the mosquito abatement, you were on the TV.
Oh.
Yesterday.
Okay.
Davis County's mosquito abatement people were, were all talking about how hard it was to get employees and. And the the harvest of particularly. One kind of mosquito that grows in wetlands and, you know, so, and the one, the one that carries the snail. Yeah.
Oh, and eighties Egypt, I, well, Egypt.
But it was all on TV, they, this big bucket of mosquitoes, they dumped out a five gallon bucket.
That's cool, I didn't know that was on TV, so.
On TV.
There we go.
We can represent.
Wait a minute. Yeah.
They do all the work.
One other item, I will, I will not be with you on the 27th. We're having a family reunion in Spokane and I've spoken with Dave, who is the pro tem, and he will conduct that meeting on the 27th. We'll be out of, of cell or internet service, so I won't be joining you. So I want to thank Dave for taking that over. Brody, do you have anything?
Managers report's in your inbox, it's action packed for June. And the only other thing, there was an email I sent out this afternoon. We've got the the latest update on where those fiber huts will be located, let me know if there's any problems, otherwise, you know, they're gonna, they're doing their design for the network, so just keeping you in the loop.
Can I throw one more shout out here?
Yeah.
We're very small numbers, so it's not like a lot of people are gonna say, but I mentioned to Krista, who's absent at this point. I put up a booth, vendor booth at Heritage Days and it went so well that I put them up at a couple of our neighboring places as well. Ours is so much better, they do such a good job and I complimented her in the last time I saw her at Arts Council, but. Just to let you know, our festival was so much better organized than every other one, Leighton had some really nice trees, but other than that. They have the years on us for the tree.
Speaking of which, the museum sold $200 worth of dolls.
And Krista, Krista's with us online.
Yeah, Krista?
Thank you.
I did want to let everybody else know, she just, ours kicked butt on every other place.
Thank you, Krista. Anyone else, anything? Counselor, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night and.